Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is July 27, 2016. We're holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. Our agenda order will be as follows. We will have the election of the President and Vice President, the CEO report, public participation, and then we will go into executive session and come out and begin the process of voting. As I ask at every board meeting, and I'm very, very pleased at the reaction that I have been seeing, I ask for courteous and thoughtful behavior. There are many people who want to speak, many people who have a perspective and a point of view, and they all deserve to be heard. And I also remind you that this is televised, and everything we do is seen by many, including the very young people, that we're here to support and set an example for. So I expect, and frankly, I have been receiving very, very courteous behavior, and I appreciate that.
Mr. President, will proceed with the pledge?
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you. Please rise.
..........................................................................................
Today's meeting is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong?
Present.
Member Jordan Turner?
Present.
Vice President Guzman?
Present.
Member Dr. Hines?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Father Garanzini?
Present.
President Clark?
Present.
We have seven members present. I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our Chief Executive Officer, Ronald Marmar, our General Counsel, Dr. Janice Jackson, our Chief Education Officer, Vanda Verma, the Executive Director of Early College and Career, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Board Member Guzman, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the board elect Frank M. Clark to the office of the President of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
Member Clark?
Can I vote for myself?
You can.
I think I say yes.
Thank you. Seven ayes, zero nays. Congratulations to Frank M. Clark, the President of the Chicago Board of Education. And, Mr. President, we will now proceed with the election of the Vice President, please.
Board Member Furlong, do you have a motion?
I move that the board elect Jaime Guzman to the office of the Vice President of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Member Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Congratulations to Jaime Guzman, the Vice President of the Chicago Board of Education. Thank you.
Before we proceed with the business portion of our meeting, I just want to make one comment. Being elected to serve on this board in any capacity, as a member, as a Vice President or as a President, it's an honor, it's a privilege, it's also a challenge. And speaking for myself, what makes this rewarding, gives me tremendous hope, is when I hear the kind of passion and enthusiasm people bring as they come to the mic, often with very, very diverse points of views, often providing direction and guidance for members of the board, sometimes in a very strong and pointed fashion, but always intended to improve the Chicago Public School system and the children that we're responsible for. I appreciate that input, however it's received, although, as I've said repeatedly, we hear it better when it's said nicely, or relatively so. But I also have the privilege of sitting with six other completely dedicated civic servants for this great city of Chicago. And sitting with these people, and then a part of what they are trying to do as a group is truly a privilege, and I don't take it lightly, and I am very, very grateful. We will do our best. Some of you will think we are, and maybe even succeeding. Some of you think less so, but we will continue to do our very best for all of the young people that we all want to do and see have the best possible opportunity that they can using this wonderful vehicle of education, which frankly has no substitute. Vice President Guzman?
I just want to echo those same sentiments. It's, I appreciate the leadership from you, Frank, and I appreciate the leadership from the leadership team at CPS, Forrest, and Janice. You know, in addition to the honor, privilege, and challenge, I want to just add responsibility, you know, and I want to appreciate all the folks that hold us accountable. I hear from those folks a lot, and I appreciate the perspective. And as President Clark said, we're going to do our best to continue to do what we can for students across the city.
Thank you. And because I didn't say it first time around, but Vice President Lou said it, I want to really echo that. The leadership at CPS, and some of you will agree with this, some of you may not, but the leadership at CPS is as good as I've ever seen it, and I've been involved for decades in one form or another. With our CEO Forrest Claypool, with Dr. Janice Jackson, we have some of the best business, academic, and committed minds in the City of Chicago moving the Chicago Public School system forward. The academic achievements have gone in one direction: up. The budget problems have gone in one direction, frankly, down. Down doesn't mean gone, but down. So there's tremendous leadership at every level, and frankly, we hope that you see it, and we hope that you support it. It doesn't mean that everything we do, we do in a manner that perhaps you think we should, and of course, we need your very candid and direct input. And I think for, once we go into public participation, we'll get that. And with that, we'll go now to our CEO Forrest Claypool for his report.
Thank you, President Clark. It's become routine for us to talk about the district's finances, but as you indicated, Mr. President, we have a little positive news, finally, because on June 30th, our lawmakers in Springfield took an important step forward in how education is funded in Illinois. Thanks to several legislative measures, more than $600 million in additional funds were allocated to CPS, making it possible for us to open schools on time and provide our students with the resources they need to be successful in the coming school year. The legislative package had three parts. First, lawmakers gave us the opportunity to help ourselves and allowed the Board of Education to reinstate a property tax levy that will generate $250 million to help fund Chicago's teachers' pensions. Second, CPS received $102 million as part of a statewide equity grant to help more equitably fund those Illinois students who serve high numbers of low-income families, and an additional $29 million in early education funds. Finally, CPS will receive $215 million from the state as a major step forward in equitably funding our teachers' pensions. Our hope is that these principles will eventually be enshrined in the long-term education reforms that we have fought so hard to achieve, along with our partners downstate and in suburban districts. While these pension funds are contingent on the state enacting long-term pension reform, we believe that the state has made an important commitment and will live up to its word. The compromise reached on June 30th means that our $1.1 billion deficit has been significantly reduced, and that the devastating cuts we feared would be necessary next school year are now off the table. Though a budget gap of $300 million remains, the events of the last few weeks are a huge step in the right direction. So I want to thank particularly the thousands of parents, students, educators, principals, and the school communities who joined our 20 for 20 campaign for fair funding from Springfield. It's obvious that that grassroots campaign caught the attention of our leaders, they heard your voices, and because of that, our students will receive the resources they deserve this year. We spent all of last school year with a financial cloud hanging over our heads, and that cloud has not lifted completely, but thanks to all of your hard work, the sun has definitely started to break through. But there's still work to be done before the school year begins. Earlier this month, we presented school budgets to principals that will protect classrooms from budget cuts that we had feared. In fact, these budgets preserved the same level of funding across the district as we instituted in February's mid-year cuts. The good news is that we didn't have to go any deeper. We're continuing to work with schools to implement new management changes that will also help them work through enrollment changes and other issues. Next month, we will present a balanced budget for CPS, which will require us to further tighten our belts. We will work with all of our principals and departments on spending every dollar more efficiently to keep additional cuts away from our classrooms. We will also continue working with the CTU to reach a final agreement that is fair for teachers and that bends our district's cost curve. We hope that CTU leadership will follow the example set by Springfield, the CPS administration, and Chicago taxpayers, who have all accepted shared responsibility for our financial situation and chosen to put children first. I would like to provide an important update as well on the way we serve our students with diverse needs. Overall, CPS students have made incredible gains in the last few years, and we could not be more proud of their accomplishments. But we want that success to be representative of every child in the district, including our diverse learners. Research tells us that despite significant investments in special education, there remains a sizable achievement gap between students with disabilities and their peers who do not confront the same learning challenges. As a district, we also have a disproportionate number of English language learners and minority students identified as having diverse learning needs. These results are unacceptable, and it will require a dramatic shift to educating diverse learners. We will begin by prioritizing a multi-tiered system of supports, which treats every student as an individual with a specific plan to meet their needs. We will strengthen our standards and our oversight when it comes to special education, and we will improve service delivery by addressing current weaknesses in our case management system. Finally, we will use data to measure, monitor, and hold ourselves accountable for improving outcomes for diverse learners, ensuring that they are prepared to succeed in college and at work. These changes will affect many stakeholders and will require a significant amount of training. Our principals began that training earlier this week, and we will continue to invest in the resources and supports that our educators need to successfully implement this strategy. Closing this achievement gap will not be easy, but CPS is committed to making it happen. In the coming school year, every school is receiving the same resources for diverse learners that it received last year. We're giving schools these funds upfront so that they can execute one of our top priorities: funding and scheduling diverse learners first, which ensures that students with disabilities have as much access to the general education curriculum and their general education peers as possible in their individual circumstances. We promise our students that we will provide them with a quality education to prepare them for success in life. We make the same promise to our diverse learners. Most importantly, we will continue to make sure that every student's IP is fully met, and we will continue to work with advocates, and have discussed these plans with many in recent weeks, to make sure this approach fulfills our promise. Now I'd like to turn things over to our Chief Education Officer, Dr. Janice Jackson.
Good morning, and thank you, Forrest. Want to echo Forrest's comments around the importance of our approach to supporting our students using MTSS. As Forrest noted, this program or this approach is important because it prioritizes the needs of all students. I'm happy to report that earlier this month, we trained all of the district staff and principals on MTSS, on the MTSS framework, and we're excited about the way that it was received by the principals and also the plans for implementation long term. The reason MTSS is an important step forward is, number one, its simplicity. The focus is simply about meeting students where they are and providing them with both the academic and social resources that they need in order to be successful. This will require an effort from central office, network staff, as well as school staff. So our next step is to train network, we've trained network staff, but to continue to train network staff, but also teachers at the schools, so that teacher teams are organized around this work and support for our students. It's important to note that this is not just a diverse learner strategy. Again, this is for all students, which is why it is housed and led out of the Office of Teaching and Learning, which is led by Chief Annette Gurley, who is a big proponent of students and also ensuring that students are provided with a high-quality education. It is for that reason, and also a reason that's a little bit more bittersweet, that I would like to take this time to recognize Chief Gurley. Not only is she a big proponent of MTSS and student learning, but she has dedicated almost 40 years of her life to education, over 32 years here in Chicago Public Schools and another seven years or so with the Archdiocese of Chicago. At this, excuse me, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Board Member Gail Ward to offer a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Education in recognition of Chief Gurley and her exemplary leadership as a teacher, counselor, principal, network chief, and Chief Officer of Teaching and Learning. Board Member Ward?
Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson. And Annette Gurley, could you please stand? And perhaps, would you mind coming to the microphone? Thank you. You know, I'm honored and privileged to be able to read this proclamation, and it's with great enthusiasm and without hesitation that I read this proclamation from the Board of Education of the City of Chicago. Honoring Annette Jackson Gurley, Chief of Teaching and Learning, whereas after 32 years of faithful and dedicated service, Annette Jackson Gurley will retire from the Chicago Public Schools on August 5, 2016. And whereas Annette Jackson Gurley began her career with the Chicago Public Schools in 1985 as a middle school teacher at Michelle Clark Middle School, and continued her career at Michelle Clark Middle School as a teacher facilitator in 1990, and then served as assistant principal in 1994. And whereas in 2001, Annette Jackson Gurley became the interim principal, and in 2002, served as the principal of Michelle Clark Middle School. And whereas during her first three years as principal of Michelle Clark Middle School, was heralded as one of Chicago Public Schools' rising stars, a distinction for schools showing student gains and performance on the ISAT. And in 2007, Clark Middle School was recognized as one of only 48 elementary schools showing six years of consecutive gains on the ISAT. And whereas in 2007, Annette Jackson Gurley was appointed Area Instructional Officer, Area 3, I believe it was. In 2009, Chief Area Officer. In 2011, Chief of Elementary Schools, Austin North Lawndale, where she supported, developed, coached, and supervised principals by providing instructional leadership to area-school administrators. And whereas since 2012, Annette Jackson Gurley has served as Chief Teaching and Learning Officer. And whereas Annette Jackson Gurley committed and tireless effort to improving the Chicago Public Schools will leave a lasting impact throughout our schools and communities, and will be recognized as a leader, a pioneer, an advocate, a mentor, and a friend. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the President Clark and my fellow board members of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, gathered here this 27th day of July 2016, do hereby extend to Annette Jackson Gurley our thanks for her service and offer our most sincere gratitude for her contributions to the school system and the children of the City of Chicago. Be it further proclaimed that a suitable copy of this proclamation be made available to Annette Jackson Gurley. Thank you.
Do you have anything to say? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Annette. I can't think of anyone more deserving. I mean, she's an excellent educator and has served as a mentor to me and many, and many others. So you will be missed, but I'm jealous. Congratulations on your retirement. It's well deserved. Finally, just one last update regarding the latest happenings at Kiri Metropolitan High School. You've probably heard a lot about Kiri recently in that the school's vocal ensemble has been recognized, the group's name is Musicality, and they've been recognized on the hit show America's Got Talent. They actually performed live last night, so please go on and vote for our children. They're representing Chicago really well. But it's also important to note that Kiri is one of 23 Chicago organizations that have recently been awarded the 2016 Peace Grant by Mayor Emanuel and the Emerson Collective. Kiri's proposal, which includes initiatives designed to decrease violence and promote peace in our community, was selected from hundreds of applicants and has resulted in grant opportunities to fund youth engagement for our students, employment opportunities, and also to ensure that our students have a safe and productive summer. So I thought it was important to recognize this school as a school on the rise. They've had a lot of success this school year, and also, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to promote a Musicality program. So please tune in and vote for our children. At this time, I want to turn it over and continue with important updates around lead testing in Chicago Public Schools. President Clark, you may remember at the last meeting, we promised to continue to update you, as well as the public, on our progress. So I'd like to turn it over to Jason Kerner at this time to provide an update on behalf of the district. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, I can't pronounce his last name. I'll let him pronounce it. I don't want to butcher it.
Dejoi Sakas.
Okay. You can teach me later. Thank you.
So, Board Members, what I'd like to do is give you an update on our lead, on our lead testing. So as previously committed, we tested 324 out of 529 campuses, and those tests, that test was completed on June 22, as we had committed. Results have been coming back, and as of today, we have 285 schools which have come back from the medical labs, the EPA-rated medical labs, which are 88% of the total. And so overall, we've taken 25,600 samples, 5,300 devices have been, have been actually looked at. So from that, what I can tell you is that approximately 179 out of the 5,300 devices that have come back have had at least one sample above the action level. So overall, just to give you an indication, what that really means is we've taken 26,000 samples, 25,600 samples, excuse me, and from that, it's about 1.4% of those samples showed an action level. So we've been very dedicated to make sure that we've been thoroughly testing all potable water, we've been thoroughly testing all of the various places where children might be drinking that water. So from those, we do do some immediate actions. The actual devices that have been identified were immediately discommissioned, and remediations were taken, efforts were taken immediately. Again, 133 devices already have published remediation plans on the website. 41 devices have had those plans implemented, and we continue to do so throughout this summer. So that's one of the big things we want to make sure, is we let you know, is as the summer has taken on, we further are developing protocols, working through various remediation plans, and making sure that we continue to make sure that water is safe for our children. But testing for the future. So in the fall, we will commence testing for the remaining 205 campuses, and we expect to have all samples on these devices in these 205 campuses completed by the last week of October. We're going to continue using our processes that have, that have been, that have been developed thus far to test, to receive those tests, and then obviously decommission and remediate if necessary. But if you recall, the 205 schools that are left are schools that have had, based on our priority, based on our analysis, were at a less likely position to actually have lead in the water because of when they were built, they're relatively newer buildings. That is my report.
You used to wear a decommission a couple of times. We're talking sources of water, so for the most part, drinking fountains in the schools or maybe sinks. So when you say decommission, which is a technical term, it means that we have shut them off.
You are correct. We do a little more than just shut them, we do shut them off absolutely immediately. We also put bags over them to make sure that children don't get a chance to touch the device entirely. And so we try to make sure that no one gets to touch it until remediation occurs.
Thank you. Any other questions for Alfonso?
Yeah, just really quickly, it sounds like you all have done a really good job at responding to some of those concerns. At what level is it a concern, in terms of all of the facilities? At what level would it be a red flag, yellow flag, where it would raise, you know, raise concern in terms of testing across the, across the district?
Across the district. When we look at other districts, and we look at, for example, the situation that occurred in Flint, what we really are talking about are results that are coming back that are really close to that EPA standard action limit. We have not found situations like in Flint where it was in the thousands. The EPA action limit is about 15 parts per billion, I'm sorry, not about, it is specifically 15 parts per billion, and I can say with all frankness that all of the samples that have come back have been in that general area. So I can tell you that we do not have, we have not found yet, a significant situation where there's been a school or a device that has, you know, provided some really difficult results back. So we are comfortable that we're in a good position. That doesn't mean that we, we're just resting. We want this to be zero. I just want to make this really clear, we want this to be zero. Zero is the appropriate number. We're concerned about what we do have, and we're doing everything we can to keep our children safe.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
President Clark, this concludes the CEO report.
Let me just make a general announcement. At every board meeting, I encourage all of you to continue the use of our website, cpsboe.org. It's a very efficient way of getting your questions answered, your issues addressed. And I'm pleased to say that we continue seeing more use of that website. We're committed to a 48-hour turnaround, and to the best of my knowledge, we meet that commitment. And we meet it by giving you substantive responses and not superficial ones. And of course, we continue to have meetings, office hours, where you can come in and meet with a board member, and some of these we are doing now out in the communities, and we will continue to do that. I think with that, Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, August 24, 2016, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 10:30 a.m. Monday, August 22, 2016, and will close on Tuesday, August 23, 2016, at 5 p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's proceed now with the public participation session. Madam Secretary, please share the rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our board office staff member, Eric, who is here to your left. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And we will start with the elected officials that we have with us here today, and I will start by calling Alderman Cardenas from the 12th Ward, followed by Alderman Wagasbeck from the 32nd Ward, and Alderman Villegos from the 36th Ward, and then we'll have Luis Arroyo, the Cook County Commissioner from the 8th District. Alderman?
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. And first off, good morning. Good morning, Frank. To you and the rest of the board, Mr. Guzman?
Good morning.
And Forrest, and the executive team. Janice, good morning. Obviously, we've been tremendously stressed over the last few months on school funding. It's no secret, you guys have been working hard, along with CTU and other organizations. So kudos to you and the rest of the folks that went to Springfield and fought for additional funding for our schools and for better equity as our children. funding for our schools and for better equity, as our children deserve that and badly need it. My visit here, it's not distant from what has happened the last couple of months. I'm greatly concerned, as a leader of my community and this city, to have learned that my ward, the one that I represent, has faced cuts to the tune of $29 million. I'm only second to the 25th Ward since 2013. It is completely unacceptable for me, as a leader of my community, to accept those cuts and not do something about it. I know much more needs to be done, and I want to be here as part of the solution. There's a great cost of uncertainty. It goes into the calculus of people's minds, not just in business, but you can put it here in context, parents, schools, leaders, and everyone else. Frank, you ran a tremendously successful corporation, Comet, for many, many years. Imagine yourself not knowing what the five-year plan is or the 10-year plan is, from a capital standpoint, from a human resource standpoint. Imagine yourself not knowing who's coming into work and who's not. Not knowing what the expenses are so that people can travel and get to do the things they need to do to make sure your company succeeds. Imagine all those ingredients, all those variables, if you will, from a business standpoint. How can you run a corporation that way? This school is also a corporation, in a sense, a public service, where we build future leaders, where we build our communities, where we provide a nest of nothing but greatness that comes from that. It feeds these businesses, it feeds the economic vitality of everything that happens in our communities and our city. And as part of my responsibility, fiduciary responsibility as a leader, the last council meeting, I proposed the TIF surplus, which has happened before. But this year, we went above and beyond just the regular calculation. We said, why not be creative and do more? We added a 20% calculus to a revitalization plan for CPS. So the schools that need roof, the roofs that need capital infusions, I know I have one particular school, Everett, a few hundred students in it has, no air conditioning. The school is in dire need of capital work, but hasn't gotten it in many, many years. We have built schools, no doubt. We keep building schools. But we cannot forget those schools that also need, and those kids that also need an opportunity. When we help others, we cannot forget the rest. The great costs of uncertainty have a tremendous negative impact on our children, on our parents, not knowing if they're going to send their kids to school, not knowing what comes next. And I think it's leading, to some extent, an exodus of parents in our communities deciding not to enroll the kids in our schools, but to go someplace else. I can only surmise that that's the case, because my schools are vibrant. Mr. Frank, you alluded to the fact that our schools have made tremendous progress. They have. They have indeed. A lot of my schools are Level 1 schools now. Tremendous effort has been made, from a leadership standpoint, from an education standpoint. And I stand here today, the teachers are a great part of that. And I would denounce Governor Rauner's statement of what he said about teachers. Really, we all should. That is nonsense. It is nonsense in an environment where we need to act together to make sure our children get the best footing forward, moving forward. We owe that to them. I can tell you, because some of these kids, and I can talk about Calmekka Academy, Level 1 school now, struggled the last couple of years, a great music program, mariachi program that I just went to visit, which I've also pledged to help, these kids are playing great. We just talked, we just heard from Janice about Curry High School, and these kids that are, they made it to America's most talented. That's what you're getting from your schools. That's what you're getting from your leadership, and from the teachers that are there, making sure these kids not just learn, but excel, and are representing our city the way they should. We owe to them our commitment. And I would ask you to really put your best forward. Your best foot forward when it comes to funding the schools adequately across the board. I can only tell you, these kids, when they learn, not just the civic lessons and the programs and the regular curriculum, but they also, you add on the music, and you add on the arts, and you add on the after-school programs. That completes the package what the children should receive from us, no less. Think about the cycle of violence, and if I may, I know we have a time limit. I can tell you my story, big family, seven children. And during the 1980s, when there was a huge upsurge of violence, we decided to move north of the city, to escape this nemesis that does not obeyed in our communities. Some of us went to a different school. I ended up at Lane Tech. And some of us, when we came back to our communities, went to a different school. You know what the outcome was? Our futures are linked directly to the education we got back in those days. The ones that went to good schools have great jobs, and the ones that didn't, do not. So I'm here, and so that formula, that worked back then, to tell you how important it is to give these kids and these communities a fighting chance to a better future. These cuts cannot happen. They have a setting impact on families, as I said, and parents, and their anxiety I just cannot live with. The uncertainty, I believe, is a silent killer for many families. It seeps into self-confidence and wonder if they will ever make it. Make a better future for the ones that they know, and that they know the future that they have is no future at all. It's essentially a cycle that I'm trying to abate and end finally. My schools cannot receive any more cuts. I'll reiterate, 2013 to 2017, 29, more than $29 million of cuts have come to the school.
Alderman, if you can please conclude.
Thank you. I urge you to restore the school cuts and send a message that together, we will fight for the children that cannot fight for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Our next speaker, please. Alderman Wagasback from the 32nd Ward.
Good morning, President Clark, board members, CEO Claypool, and staff, parents and teachers here today. My name is Scott Wagasback, 32nd Ward Alderman. Today, I stand with parents and teachers and 37 fellow Aldermen, asking the board to use your influence and authority to redirect tens of millions of dollars in TIF surplus back to Chicago public schools. The latest $89 million infusion into our Chicago TIF surplus is an indication that the system can and will survive even with the CPS surplus. We all know the story that TIF was designed to encourage economic development in our blighted areas throughout the city. But that direction has been muddled and abused for decades, and much funds have been redirected away from CPS. As the ordinance that we are sponsoring today dictates, in light of the current economic circumstances, a short-term infusion of funds back into our schools and neighborhoods will offset these drastic cuts, helping achieve the ultimate goal of supporting strong schools in our neighborhoods. And without this strong foundation, we are not much of a city and must lack the leadership to recognize this. A few weeks ago, budget staff from CPS came to City Council for briefings on the CPS budget with plans to right the ship. Many of Aldermen were appalled when CPS brought only a couple of options, one of which was dead on arrival in Springfield. To that point, the City Council is offering you a chance to partake in the most sensible offer on the table today, tapping into taxpayers' TIF surplus system and following through on additional revenue options presented by parents, teachers, and many of my colleagues. You don't have to take all of the ideas on the table, but there are enough out there that would help balance the books for years to come. In my part of the city, in my ward, many people are economically better off than much of the city. But the more we starve our schools of resources, the more I hear from parents, like the ones I spoke to this weekend, who are putting their homes on the market and moving to Evanston and other suburbs. And guess what? They're taking all of their tax dollars with them. That means that the schools in my ward might be losing per pupil funding for each of their kids. That means we're losing sales tax every day, and more importantly, it means our community loses two active, engaged, caring parents. I wish I could say this one from this weekend was an isolated story, but it's not. You and I know, the more we cut our schools to the bone, the more tax-paying families we lose to the surrounding suburbs. So let's get serious about raising revenue in a progressive way that's fair to working families and everyone in Chicago. Again, CPS could start by aggressively supporting our ordinance for TIF surplus, sponsored by my colleagues Alderman Cardenas and Alderman Villegas and several other Aldermen. When you come to the City Council and taxpayers, come with sustainable plans to stop the bleeding. You should have a clear, sustainable vision for the future of our public schools and what funding sources are needed to make them viable options for all families throughout Chicago. The options are available, and we all hope you will start with the easiest to implement, the TIF surplus. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you, Alderman. Our next speaker, please. Alderman Villegas from the 36th Ward.
Good morning, Frank.
Good morning, Alderman.
Good morning, Forrest, entire board. I'd like to thank CPS for working with my office and Cook County Commissioner Arroyo's office on an agenda item that you guys passed regarding bringing a clinic to the northwest side of the city, a much-needed clinic. The campus that Hanson Park is perfect for this clinic. The campus has over 5,000 kids in that immediate area, not to mention the tens of thousands of people in the 36th Ward that would have access to this. I appreciate the collaboration between the city, county, and CPS to bring this project to fruition at no cost to CPS and no cost to the city of Chicago. Actually, Cook County is actually funding this project. I would also be remiss that I didn't mention that we need to do something to address the overcrowding on the northwest side of the city. We have the fastest-growing population in that area, and in talking with the Public Building Commission, there isn't a plan to address the overcrowding needs. And so I want to work closely with you to try to develop a plan on that. I also must advocate for a shovel-ready project that is very important to the children at Lock School. In my lobbying efforts in Springfield, I was able to secure $500,000 from State Representative Arroyo, Chairman of Appropriations. And I put in $200,000 from my menu money, and the mayor has committed the $300,000 for this artificial turf at a Level 1-plus school that we so much are advocating for. The kids are out right now, so it'd be a perfect time to construct this field, which would probably take about three weeks to do. So that way, when they return back in September, they're coming back to this beautiful field where these kids can enjoy recess on a nice field, instead of having to run around in the mud and run around when all the dust is in the area. So I want to work closely with you guys to develop some type of infrastructure plan or capital development plan on the northwest side of the city. So again, thank you for your support, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman. And our next speaker, Mr. President, is Lisa Arroyo, please, the Cook County Commissioner from the 8th District.
Good morning. Thank you, board, staff, parents, and teachers in the audience. I'm here today to speak in support of what Alderman Gilbert Villegas, one of my Aldermen, commented earlier, is an item before you later today. I'm bringing a Cook County clinic to some of the property you have at Hanson Park Stadium. It is something that is going to be a cost to Cook County, bringing a new state-of-the-art facility for all the people that are living in that area, as the Alderman mentioned, is one of the fastest-growing communities and in dire need of health care. We currently have a clinic on Fullerton and Mozart in the eastern part of my district that is a very small, 6,000 to 7,000-square-foot facility with six or seven parking spaces and very overcrowded. The new facility is going to be close to a 20,000-square-foot, $12 million project that's going to bring health care, mental health, dentistry, and pediatrics to the northwest side of Chicago. So I'm here today to speak in support of that, and I hope that passes. I would also like to thank my colleagues in the City Council, Alderman Gilbert Villegas, Alderman Scott Wagasback, and Alderman Cardenas, for the hard work that they do putting our children in the CPS schools first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, we are now ready to proceed with the speakers list, and our first speakers will be Speaker Number One, please, Jill Wohl, followed by Speaker Number 28, Rosalia Grilier, followed by Speaker Number Two, Andrea Tulsmann.
Before we start, Rose and I are speaking on the same thing, and you all are very busy and in the interest of time. We're going to consolidate our statements, and Rose is going to speak. Can you let us down to the head?
28, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wohl. I appreciate that. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Rosalia Grilier. And I wear many hats. However, along with other concerned organizations, today I'm here representing COFI, Community Organizing, and Family Issues, and Power Pack, Parents Organized to Win, Educate, and Renew Policy Action Council, to which I am one of the chairs of that organization. If you notice, today I'm dressed in black, because this meeting somewhat reminds me of a funeral, where we had, we've all lost a dear friend. This friend was of great value, not only to over, well over 90,000 CPS students, helping them obtain health insurance programs, SNAP benefits, otherwise known as food stamps, and various other services that these children need the most. In addition, let me remind you of how devoted this dear friend has been to CPS. Each year, our friend made $24 million in Title I dollars earmarked for schools with high levels of poverty, another $300,000 to $400,000 in Medicaid reimbursement for students with disabilities, outside grants that pay for about half of the teen millions of operating costs. So please, my dear and ensuring partners, to make sure that all of our children have access to quality education and the services that they thrive, please say it ain't so. Say we have not lost our dear friend, Children and Families Benefits Unit. Please say that it is just a brief moment of illness.
Ms. Grilier, excuse me, can you please conclude?
And you will do everything within your power to resuscitate our dear and valued friend, Children and Families Benefit Unit.
Thank you, Ms. Grilier.
You have handouts, one from the Kaiser Commission on Medicaid Uninsured, on using schools and acting data to enroll kids in Medicaid and TIF.
Thank you, Ms. Wohl.
And then an article on it.
Our next speaker, please. Andrea Tulsmann. She will be followed by Speaker Number Three, please, Pan Whitmer, and then Speaker Number Four, Jeff Young. Please state your name.
Andrea Tulsmann. My name is Andrea Tulsmann from Pulaski International School, and I thank you for hearing me today as I ask for better transparency from CPS when reporting to school stakeholders. The school budget rollout this summer has not been an open and transparent process. CPS shared budgets with principals based on mid-year cut levels, and this was not a transparent message of how inadequate these budgets are. There absolutely are funding cuts to classrooms. Schools and classrooms were affected last year with cuts, and they will be this year, too. It is disingenuous for this board and CPS officials to say these inadequate budgets will not affect the classrooms. All Means All Funding for Our Diverse Learners is an example of this non-transparent decision that cuts funding from classrooms. CPS has not been transparent at all about the mysterious funding formula that's being used to allocate All Means All Funding. This formula is not being made available to principals, and it was not provided to my school, Pulaski, last year when we were an AMA pilot school. Pulaski lost funding for special ed teachers and aides despite having more students with IEP minutes. Yet CPS diverse learners and budget officials had no explanation or answer to what funding formula was used to allocate our budget last year. What's going to happen this year when 550 schools are asking the same question? Will CPS share this formula to help us understand these inadequate budgets for our diverse learners? Will CPS share this formula to help us understand these inadequate budgets for our diverse learners? So I ask you, what is the funding formula being used to figure out All Means All Funding? If CPS were truly transparent about these budgets, it would have followed its own example of transparency, as has been exhibited with the lead testing website, which is being updated daily, is easy to search, and is being publicly shared. CPS should have created a public database to share these budgets that shows last year's funding formulas with separate special ed funding and enrollment compared to this year's with separate All Means All funding lines to show how these monies will fit into our schools' SBB funds. The budget waters have been very murky for principals and LSCs to quickly get through this year. We try to understand where we started last year and how we got to where we are this year, and it's like comparing apples to oranges. Schools have been left searching through these murky waters to decide what to cut so that it won't affect classrooms, while CPS is celebrating these budgets in their messages to CPS stakeholders and the public. I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
School communities and Chicago taxpayers deserve honesty and respect in the message they receive from their school district, and we deserve leaders that do not celebrate budgets that cut more resources from the classrooms than our students. The future of our children and our city depends on an equitably funded and transparent school system. Please join parents across the city and advocate for the maximum TIF surplus to help offset the cuts to the system.
Thank you, Ms. Tulzman. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, and thank you for your time today. My name is Pam Whitmer. I'm the Senior Policy Manager at the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. I'd like to talk to you today about special education. Charter public schools serve nearly the same proportion of diverse learners as district-run schools, and they remain committed to providing them with an excellent education. Because of this commitment, I'm concerned about how the district is implementing its new 4% special education holdback. It's my understanding that the funds that the district will retain through the 4% holdback from both charter schools and district-run schools' special education budgets will be pooled together and then distributed to schools to pay for increases in special ed enrollment and to fund schools' successful appeals for additional funds. I have two concerns about combining both the charter schools and the district-run schools' 4% holdback into one pool. First, the district has not yet established how it will handle charter schools' appeals processes for these additional funds, but it has established this process for district-run schools, and that process will begin next week. If district-run schools are the only ones that have access to this process and these funds, what will happen when these funds in this holdback pool are used up? This leads me to my second concern. In that scenario, charter schools and charter school students would either be denied appeals or be forced to wait for additional funds to appear, resulting in them once again being used as some sort of twisted line of credit for the district. This concern is not unwarranted. In fact, it's common practice. The district already significantly delayed charter schools' special education payments from last year, and this year is delaying their first-quarter general tuition payments because the district ran out of money. District-run schools do not feel the same type of pinch. To preserve dedicated charter school funds and avoid inherently unfair funding practices, I'm asking that you keep the charter's 4% special education holdback separate from the district-run school's special education holdback and spend these dollars only on each school's respective school type. Charter school students are your students. Please ensure that they are funded equitably.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmer.
Thank you. Frank, just a question. Instead of letting this one go unsolved, it sounds like there is an answer to this one. Is it possible that we would consume all of the funds and the charter schools would be left? It sounds so inconsistent with everything else I know that happens at CPS. So is there anyone here that could?
I think our CEO can address this.
Right.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've talked about this repeatedly, and I don't -- every IEP gets funded, and if the appeals process is charters, it's district, there's no money that goes away. If there's an IEP that needs to be funded, that is funded. And the reason we're providing the money upfront this year is so that all the IEPs are funded upfront. But there's also a lot of movement throughout 617 schools, charters and district. Enrollment goes up and down, IEPs go up and down. We do 10th-day and 20th-day enrollment adjustments, so we have to have a pool of money to reconcile all that. And if there's still IEPs that need to be funded after all that, then they will be funded because that's what the law requires. So it's not formulas, it's not holdbacks, it's not a pot. It is every IEP gets funded, and the reform we took place this year was to ensure that all the IEPs get funded upfront and first and scheduled first, which has not happened in the past. And every IEP will continue to be funded, whether it's at a charter school or whether it's at a district school. So you have access to whatever you need to fund your IEPs, and that appeal process is open to you, just as it is to the district-run schools.
So if I can respond to things, so charter schools' special education dollars don't come upfront, they come at the end of the quarter, and I recognize that--
Right, you're on a quarterly block system, so you're right, it does create differences.
Yes, there's a cash flow issue there, and it's my understanding that the district won't move forward with paying them upfront because there is a cash flow issue. And so if the money--
Per month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a month problem, but we will work closely with you.
Great, thank you. But moving forward, it would be great if the money is there just to keep them in the pools. I think you will generate much more trust in the community in general.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue. So the next speaker, please, Jeff Young, last call.
I'm Jeff Young. During the school closures, I came before this board, and I accused it of a lack of accountability, a lack of transparency, and a lack of advocacy. Over the last few months, I have seen Mr. Claypool advocate quite more strongly than his predecessors have for Chicago public schools, but I still have some concerns. I'm an LSC member, a parent rep on Darwin's local school council, and last week, we dealt with our budget. I voted no. I voted no because of the amount of time that we had to agree on the budget. I voted no because of the size of the cut, and I voted no because what I was looking at, the reality that I saw at Darwin's budget, was very different from what Mr. Claypool was saying in the media. There were indeed direct cuts that affected our classroom. We lost two aides, we lost a CICA, we lost a curriculum coordinator. We do not have the money to hire back our music teacher, who we left last year, and we had to merge two of our kindergarten classrooms. The teachers at our bilingual school are very concerned about this merge. Mr. Clark has asked for suggestions on how to solve these problems. I urge this body to support the ordinance that you heard from our Alderman, lobby the mayor for the maximum TIF surplus declaration possible, continue to lobby our lawmakers so that we don't have to face cuts in September mid-year, and also, as an LSC member, I'm asking for some more transparency in what we're hearing from the media, from the Board of Ed, and from CPS. We are facing cuts direct to our classroom, and this is in a contradiction to what we've heard, and also the totals that we've heard are very different. We are not your adversaries. We ran because we want to see our schools improved just as much as you do. Transparent communication goes a long way towards helping us towards that goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Let me, one question before you, Yuli.
Yes, sir.
You're a new member of a local school council.
Yes, I am, sir.
And you specifically voted no on a budget that I believe was approved by that council.
That is true.
What was the vote?
We had seven members. I was the only vote no.
And I applaud, frankly, your conscientiousness and I think very, very articulate effort for funding. You, of course, do, and I know you do, respect the process, and your council did approve it.
Yes.
But you still have the opportunity to come before us and lay out what you did very well, the concerns you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll proceed. The next speaker then will be Speaker Number 5, please, Karen Dominguez, followed by Speaker Number 6, Akila Mohammed, Speaker 11, Stephanie Alonso, Speaker 8, Karina Martinez, and Speaker 32, Tanya Guel. Last call for Karen Dominguez. Moving on to the next speaker, Akila Mohammed, last call. Please state your name.
Akila Mohammed, and I am a rising junior at Ogden International High School. Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Alonso, and I am a rising senior at Kelly High School. We are working with the Brighton Park Neighborhood Council this summer on a CPS budget crisis project. We are visiting 14 schools, including elementary and high schools on the southwest side of Chicago. Our goal is to determine which capital improvements these schools need. At the end of our project, we will have a list of what each school's need and the cost of these improvements. Just because you fixed something 30 years ago does not mean that it will be fixed forever. These words came from a hard-working woman named Dr. Karen Borin, the principal of John Hancock High School. She and many other principals from the southwest side of Chicago catered that the conditions of their schools are not up to par with the traditional needs of a school. Each principal has their own inventions for their school, such as extra space for either classrooms, gardens, playgrounds, or outdoor athletic facilities. For example, Brighton Park does not have a playground, so they are forced to close off the streets with cones so their kids are able to play. The school that stood out the most was Curie High School. Because of their population of 3,000 students, they are in a desperate need of a new roof because of how outdated it is. This is just one example of what one school needs out of 660 CPS schools.
Budget cuts drastically affect CPS students' education. In a survey, we asked about 500 students if they were affected by the budget cuts. One student stated, "I have to say yes. Under a low-resourced high school, we as students lack clubs that interest us and may help us discover our talents and can impact our future paths." For example, Curie is losing $2.5 million, and Brighton Park Elementary is losing about $500,000. Based on a recent survey, 76% of students at Kelly, Curie, and John Hancock High School would like to see money being used to improve the conditions of their schools. 79.5% of these students would agree that these budget cuts are destroying helpful extracurricular activities at their schools. How would you feel if your child was in a classroom where they could not focus on their schoolwork because their school does not receive adequate funding for teachers, books, renovations, or even extracurricular activities? In other words, how do you have a place for education with little educational resources for students to feed their young minds with knowledge? It's hard to prosper in a place that lacks prosperity. So how can you put a limit on a child's education? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Speaker Number 12, please, Dwayne Trust, followed by Speaker Number 15, Aaron Weinstein. We then will have Speaker Number 16, Michelle Leon, followed by Speaker 19, Marcos Seniceros. Last call for Dwayne Trust.
How are you all doing? My name is Dwayne Trust, Austin resident. First of all, I would like to give praises to God and my favorite socialist, Jesus Christ. I want to give a shout-out to my wife, Sox, and sympathy to the Cubs fans. Sorry about the beatdown last night. I've come to you this morning with several issues. First, the WBEZ articles concerning how your recent and future construction plans are contributing to the continued segregation of certain schools for the benefit of a few wealthy families. Building a new selective enrollment high school, for instance, and our neighborhood is already saturated with selective enrollment high schools, hurt our neighborhood schools, and it hurts diversity when it comes to our children. Some of you probably remember my wife and I was part of the group that said no to getting from under the consent decree, and as we predicted, certain schools are getting whiter, and some schools are not as beneficial as those schools are. Continue to get hurt with these resources are getting cut from them. And also want to emphasize diversity because many of our children, we talk about them going to college, right? But they're in a school in a segregated environment, and then you want them to go to the University of Iowa. Imagine how that student's going to be freaked out because they haven't had the interaction with each other as students like my kids have had. You know, I got one that was a California Polytech, you know, fortunately. Hey, he was one of the few, but he was comfortable with the skin. He was in and competed, so it benefited him. Another issue I want to bring your attention is the lack of transparency when it comes to bidding for certain closed schools. With the Lehman School, there was no community meetings about it. The Austin CAG did not know about it. But the Aldermen said there was a community meeting, and as you guys know, it's very hard for me to miss a meeting concerning a closed school, especially in Austin. Now, one thing I did find out and point out was to look at the fact that when the bid came down, the lower bidder won considering the district is cash-trapped. I'm assuming every dollar counts. But when we looked at the disclosure statements from the Illinois State Board of Elections, we saw a significant amount of contributions from the winning bidder to our local Alderman. So we're just basically saying that maybe you all need to take that process back and put it under leadership and learning--
Thank you for your comments.
So that way, you know, we can have a fair and transparent process, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Aaron Weinstein, last call.
Hi, I'm Aaron Weinstein. I'm on the local school council. I have been for three years at McPherson Elementary since my child was six months old. He's about to start in preschool this year, and what we've seen in the last three years is an issue with the neighborhood, people don't want to send their kids to the school. So I've hosted, we've hosted toddler times for neighborhood families weekly to come to the school. People are coming to the school. Our enrollment has been going up, as it was last year, even though it was projected to go down. It was more than we thought. You projected it again to be low. But what I want to talk about is the cuts that we have had to make to our school. Last year, we cut special ed aides in every cluster program and a technology teacher. This year, we've had to cut K-5 Spanish and our other technology teacher. So despite the fact that we were a welcoming school who have all these iPads and all these Chromebooks, we've had to cut both our technology teachers and then have our librarian instead of teaching library, teach technology now. That's the solution. We're directly competing with a brand-new French school that was built a block from our campus, and one of the things that we told the community and the families that came in is, "We have Spanish." You know, we have emergent Spanish from K through 8, and now we don't anymore because the cuts are affecting the classroom. They have been affecting all of our classrooms, our diverse learners and our learners that are on the mainstream track. We urge you guys to please work with the Aldermen to accept the TIF money that 40 of the 50 Aldermen want to provide to the district. This is really affecting the education that our kids are getting, and it affects our ability as parents to try and recruit neighborhood families to go to the neighborhood school. Please consider that for the future. I don't want to be standing here with my kids in 8th grade saying that there are no programs at the school anymore because each year, something else has been cut, and it's hard to continue to advocate for a school when programs are cut every year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weinstein. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, good morning. My name is Ashel, I'm a sophomore at Kelly High School. I am also student, LSC student rep, I'm sorry. My neighborhood, on top of the budget cuts last year, Kelly High School lost $1.5 million this year. We had to lay off teachers because we can't afford to keep them. When I heard about this, I was shocked because our teachers are the ones who pushed us to thrive and succeed. We can't afford to lose that. As a first step towards equity, we are asking that CPS schools give schools $1,000 more in per pupil-based funding. It is not fair that other school districts get more than we do. We aren't asking for much, just enough to avoid cuts this year and slowly begin to reinvest in our neighborhood schools. To do this, we need a TIF surplus ordinance and other progressive revenue solutions. I am here today to ask you, to ask for your help, to ask you, the CPS board, to work with me and other students to win more funding for our school. Will you support Aldermen, and will you also join our call for $1,000 more in pupil-based funding? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. As you know, violence has been hitting our neighborhoods.
Can you please state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Marcos Seniceros. As you know, violence has been affecting almost every neighborhood in the city. Brighton Park has seen this firsthand. I have experienced it firsthand as well. We believe that social, excuse me, school programming is important to address the violence in the city, from social workers to counselors, restorative justice practitioners. These are important personnel in the schools, and also ensuring the teacher's security, the teachers have security, and that the students feel the confidence of that teacher's security. As you have heard and you will continue to hear, the cuts are clearly affecting the classrooms, from positions being lost, from class sizes increasing, and from programs being lost. One of the problems that we see and that we continue to see is the charter school expansion, which is fiscally irresponsible. Enrollment is down at neighborhood schools. Enrollment is also down in charter schools. There's a cost to maintain the schools, as you have heard, and again, you will continue to hear, and this will also, this also goes to the issue of reinvesting in our schools, in the neighborhood schools that we have. So we want you to join us, community leaders, students, and parents to look for more funding. As you have heard from Aldermen, there is already a revenue package that is out. We want you-- We want you to support us in getting that revenue to the schools. We want a reinvestment in the schools. As we have heard earlier, musicality at Curie High School is, is city pride at the moment, but the school itself needs a new roof. The school itself needs a lot of new improvements. So if you really do care about programs like musicality, and if you really do care about schools like Curie High School, then this is a way to reinvest in the school, is to make sure that per-pupil-based funding goes up 1,000, at least $1,000. The money is there, the solutions are there. Now it's just on you to take the responsibility and to lobby for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seniseros. Our next speakers, please, will be Michelle Villegas, followed by speaker 20, Donna Lexal, followed by speaker 26, Christine Palmieri, and then speaker 30, Rhoda Rey Gutierrez.
Hello, my name is Michelle Villegas. Thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Clark, I spoke before you at the very first underutilization meeting, I think it was in 2010. So we have been advocating and fighting for equitable funding for schools in Chicago for that long, when we found that millions of dollars were being proposed to expand Lincoln Elementary School, which was a slightly overcrowded school in a sea of underutilized schools directly on its border. This, when CPS was closing 50 schools in poor neighborhoods, in mainly black and brown neighborhoods in this city. At that point, I and many of my neighbors became advocates for equitable funding in CPS. I am here as a taxpayer, a longtime CPS parent, and a social justice advocate. I want to point out the excellent article that was pointed out earlier, done by BEZ, "How Chicago School Construction Furthers Race and Class Segregation." I implore you to stop using hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars to fund institutionalized segregation in Chicago's public schools by expanding schools within wealthy enclaves in Chicago while defunding schools in poor neighborhoods. If all children matter, if black and brown children matter as much as white children, if poor children matter as much as children of the wealthy, fund and elevate all neighborhood schools equally in this city. Let me be clear about what we found out, delving into five years of investigating school funding decisions in Chicago. Racial and class segregation is not the consequence of these decisions, it is the purpose of these decisions.
Ms. Villegas, thank you.
The new method used to maintain separate and unequal schools has switched from Willis wagons in the 1960s.
Ms. Villegas, thank you.
To new annexes in the wealthy neighborhoods. The result is the same.
Our next speaker, please.
I implore you to rectify this.
Thank you, Ms. Villegas.
Let me make a quick comment. I believe 80, Dr. Jackson, I believe 86, 87% of CPS are both minority African-American and Hispanic, that's the student population, and about 85% of those fall within the federal standards or guidelines for poverty. Your suggestion, while obviously you believe the stats and the information you provided, is it's inconsistent with the realities of CPS, inconsistent with the realities of our population. I don't, I don't want to debate with you. We gave you your time. I just gave a very brief response. We can talk more, I'm open to that.
I, I would love to have a meeting with you to discuss this further.
Okay.
I have many, I have much to support our claim, and I suggest you read the article. The stats are clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Please state your name.
My name's Donna LaChelle. Good morning, everyone. As a parent and an LSC member at Shields Middle, I am extremely proud of the community school. Shields Middle School is a Level 1. This year, Shields Middle School is losing 100, 1,900, 1,98,000. This affects our students because it means a loss of 41K just on our special education program. Three to four positions will be lost. All of this hinders our student learning environment. There will be larger class sizes and a loss of program that help provide support to our children. If we increase the student-based budget per pupil funding, 1K per pupil, then we would add nearly 600K to our school budget. Given the current number of enrollment, I am here today to ask the Board of the Education for their help. Please work with us to ensure schools are fully funded. Help us win progressive revenue to increase per pupil funding in CPS. And I'd like to also mention that I have a special ed student. This is his last year, then he's gonna go off to high school. I have to worry about this year, is he gonna get the services he gets? Or am I gonna worry about him failing to repeat the eighth grade? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaChelle. Our next speaker, please, Christine Palmieri.
Hi, my name is Christine Palmieri. I'm a parent at Blaine Elementary School in Lakeview. It was falsely reported that Blaine did not receive cuts to funding, when in reality, our LSC reported a $200,000 deficit. The continual slashing of funding leads to chaos, inconsistency, and insecurity for hundreds of thousands of CPS families. I'm gonna try to do this without crying. My son has autism, and I am the parent of this child with special needs in Chicago public schools. We are considered the lowest of the low. The message from day one in kindergarten was very clear. Children with special needs are not welcome in Chicago public schools. Once again, special education funding has been cut, and the diverse learner budget has recklessly been lumped together with general education funding at the local school level. A special education teacher and two SICAs have just been cut from our school, just at a time when I was preparing to request a one-on-one aid for my child, whose IEP meetings, whose IEP minutes and aids were already not being met. Asking for such now is a virtual impossibility. But as a special needs parent, we know how to advocate. We do not tire, and we do not give up. Our children deserve more from CPS. Please move to reverse the reprehensible commingling of diverse learner budget and to release the 4% funds seemingly intended for litigation to be used for our students now. Any litigation brought forth in effort to fight for our special needs students will not be on the backs of our principals, but rather the backs of this board and the CPS management. Our children are not progressing at the rate which should be expected. I wish that this board could advocate for viable revenue sources to avoid systematic cuts like these, just as hard as we CPS parents are forced to advocate for our children's basic legal rights to a fair and equal, free, appropriate public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmieri. Our next speaker, please. Last call for Rhoda Gutierrez. Moving on to the next speakers, Mr. President, we will have speaker number 31, Wendy Catton, followed by speaker 36, George Schmidt, speaker 40, Jen Gilgore, and then speaker 42, Eric Jenkins.
Hi, good, good morning. I'm Wendy Catton, and with the parent group, raise your hand. Shortly after CPS released data on school budgets on July 13th, numerous LSC members began contacting us to say that the actual losses at their schools don't reflect the numbers being shared, which you've heard a lot of today. A lot of media has reported that it was nearly impossible to compare budgets from last year. We have a large spreadsheet going, but just a few to give you examples. Clissold reported 64,000, actual losses are 302,000. SEN, it's reported that they lost 282,000, actual is 600,000. Solomon, it's reported they lost 33,000, actual 246,000. So we really want to know what the total impact is. For the fourth year in a row, neighborhood high schools have taken the biggest hits with students in our lowest-income schools seeing their educational offerings being chipped away at again. Hyde Park High School, Manly, Foreman, all losing over 10% of their budget. Meanwhile, today, the board will vote on 15.8 million in new spending on outsourced capital project management. The list of subcontractors includes names that have been in the press for questionable practices in the past. And the board agreement neglects to include what multiplier rate the contractor will charge. The Sun-Times reported in 2014 that multipliers boosted project management's costs by 120 to 137%. How do we explain to students at Julian High School, who are losing another seven positions this year, that we have more money for the contractor from the UNO scandal, but not to properly set them up with the courses and supports they need for a chance at life? Our group trains parents to advocate for things like equitable and adequate funding at both the state and the city level, but we can't get basic transparency from our district, whether it's intentional or not. And when CPS repeatedly tells the public that cuts didn't hit the classroom.
Ms. Catton.
Yes, I'll finish.
Thank you.
It makes it difficult for us to advocate for the equitable funding Chicago students need and have an honest dialogue about the state of our public education system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Catton. Our next speaker, please. Last call for George Schmidt. Moving on to the next speaker, please.
Good morning, or afternoon. My name is Jen Gilgore, Ray Elementary, 1986, Kenwood Academy, 1990, lead literacy teacher at Mitchell in the early aughts, and currently the LSC chair agerta and mom to a fourth grader. Like you, I am all in for CPS. First, I want to thank you for serving on the board and listening. I do not envy your job. I know nobody wakes up with a maniacal cackle to say, "Ah, let's see what tacks we can throw on the road today to make it hard for our school leaders to run our schools." And yet, that's how it often feels, with a smoke bomb to follow, so we can't figure out why we can't get the car to move. My ask, if I run out of time, is to come visit our school, sit down with our principal, Barbara Cargis, who is amazing and perseveres despite so many challenges. I know many today will talk about budget cuts and high stakes, low-quality tests, and privatization. Those do affect the classrooms and school morale. Speaking of the LSC vote, yeah, our, our LSC voted for the budget out of fear. We did not want to compromise our principal's ability to move forward, but we did so with a strong objection. I'd like to continue my analogy to drive the point home, as it were. These are some words from a fellow LSC member, Tony Jones, regarding the change to special education funding. "I can't shake the idea that what CPS has done equates to if a major auto manufacturer has lowered the price of their cars and then turned around and said, 'Now we have to talk about safety belts, airbags, and bumpers. Legally, we can't let you drive off the lot without them, and here's what they cost to install.'" Here's the thing, no matter how crappy the car is, how much duct tape we need to keep it from falling apart, we keep it running. Sometimes it feels we are running on fumes, but we keep pumping the tank with love, sweat, sometimes tears, often with our own pocketbooks. And Governor Rauner, if you're listening, this week I decided to re-up my teaching credentials. CPS graduate, Ivy League graduate, master's degree. I hope that is enough for you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilgore. Our next speaker, please.
I don't know if the governor looks at our, I don't know if he does or doesn't, but we'll see if we can send a message there.
Please state your name.
Good afternoon to the board and to the public. My name is Eric Jenkins of Hyde Park, Ray Elementary, Kenwood Academy alum, and community representative for the LSC. I would like to first start off by thanking the board for its leadership and tenacity on making hardcore decisions every day that shape our educational system. I stand here today not to complain about a failed or faulty system that may be in place, but to paint an image of what budget cuts look like for the children in the community of Hyde Park. With the loss of close of $1 million, Kenwood Academy's principal, Dr. Jones, was left to put the pieces of a broken puzzle together. Across the city, we see principals scrambling just to make it work so that public education would remain a presence in our communities. It is public education that not only acts as a source of inspiration and hope to many future growing leaders, it is a safe haven for children in need. As a mental health professional and licensed childcare worker for the Department of Children and Family Services, I have witnessed abused children use school as a means of survival. It is the free lunch, after-school programs, great teachers, that are doing more for our communities than we think. The children who come across, the children who come from unfortunate situations find refuge in the schools that ultimately help them grow. With the current budget cuts, on top of $2 million in cuts over the past years at the school, we continue to lose staff, maintain position vacancies, with a steady enrollment count. In addition, Kenwood Academy's facilities are affected. Although Dr. Jones did a great job in balancing the budget and maintaining a high quality of education, there are repairs throughout our facilities that need to be done. Some simple things like missing towels on the floor, or the non-efficient security cameras on the exterior of the building. These repairs may seem miniscule to some, but to the children who use the school to shape their future and keep them safe, these improvements are important to the environment and their psychology. There's a consistent red tape that principals have to go through to send, to get these type of grants, to get these things done.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you for your time, and I ask, not for money, but I ask for extended resources so that we can get such improvements done to our facility. Thank you.
I believe that on opening day, Abigail, weren't we out of Kenwood Academies? Yeah, you've got a very impressive school. Obviously, you deserve support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers, then, will be speaker number 43, please, Charles Catroba, followed by speaker 47, Abelardo Rivera. We will then have speaker 44, David Stone, speaker 46, Natasha Carlson. Last call for Charles Catroba. Moving on to the next speaker, last call for Abelardo Rivera. Moving on to the next speaker, last call for David Stone.
Hello, I'm David Stone. I teach at Galistl Language Academy. I've been a teacher of students with special needs, known as diverse learners, for 15 years. I'm proud that we have honored our commitment to provide all students an appropriate education in the least restrictive environment, but I fear that our new budget fails to honor that commitment. The Board of Education now seems more interested in good public relations than in good public education. Diverse learners have a right to special services. This is mandated in federal law and supported by years of court cases. The Board receives federal funding specifically to support special education. Yet the Board's new, school-by-school budgets lump these special education funds in with each school's total budget for all students. This hides substantial cuts to the school budgets and threatens to deny students the special services they need. This student-based budgeting and MTSS funding for all seems to be an attempt to put the blame on principals when services are cut. Yet ultimately, the Board is responsible for ensuring that the funds it receives are spent properly. Without funds dedicated to special education, the Board appears to violate federal law and risks a lawsuit it will lose. Any cuts to classroom education are harmful, and cuts to special education are especially egregious. The Board should instead cut its bloated and growing bureaucracy and reverse years of cuts in funding for neighborhood schools. Money is available. For example, let's call for the return of money that is now being diverted to bankers and real estate developers through toxic interest rate swaps and TIPS. Please join the Chicago Teachers Union and others here in asking the mayor and city council to tap such sources of revenue, making the rich pay their fair share to provide hundreds of millions in additional funding for diverse learners.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stone.
And get the education they deserve.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Hold on one second.
You know, I'm confused, because I think I heard Forrest say, and I think I know, that I don't care what cuts come about, it is law that we follow the IEP of students, and that is law. So regardless of how the money is lumped, we still are required by law, state and federal, to meet the guidelines of any IEP student. Is that correct?
That is correct, and to ensure that there's no doubt about that, and it's very clear, this year, we're requiring that all IEPs be funded first before anything else in the school is funded. And the division between what those dollars are, what that we showed, we showed and put it out publicly what the amounts were that were spent in diverse learners, and how much were spent last year in, in, in general education. So that's completely transparent as to what was spent in diverse learner last year, what's spent in general education, and that's the starting point for this year. But of course, it will be adjusted based on enrollment, based on IEP minutes, based on all the things that, as Dr. Hein said, are required by law.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Proceed. Last call for Natasha Carlson. Moving on to the next group of speakers, we will have Speaker number seven, please, Sochi Marquez, followed by Speaker number nine, Yitzel Villegas; Speaker 10, Arthur Morales; Speaker 14, Myra Lopez; 23, Adriana Rodriguez; and 25, Kara Lynn. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Sochi Marquez, and I am a rising senior at Georgetown University, a reality that was made possible by my parents' courageous decision to move to a new country in order to provide their children with the best opportunities. My mother and father did not have the means and opportunity to attend college, but they knew that their children would. Three years ago, I graduated from Noble Street College Prep and was preparing to move to Washington, DC, a new beginning full of excitement for my family. However, this important moment in my life would not have been possible without the support and guidance of teachers, peers, and staff from my elementary days in the Chicago public school system to my enrollment at Noble Street. My high school experience was a challenging yet rewarding four years. I was exposed to high expectations that motivated me to become a better student and role model in my community. Noble saw my potential and encouraged me to get out of my comfort zone and take chances. I graduated with the mentality that success was in my path no matter where I went, as long as I worked hard for it. Throughout my time at Georgetown, Noble continued to show their support and kept in touch even when I was too busy to answer their emails. I will never forget the day when my high school advisor came to visit me or the time I received the care package before the start of finals. My Noble family was there to listen when I would rant about life, but most importantly, they were there to still encourage me to continue achieving my goals and dreams. These moments reaffirm that Noble's dedication and commitment goes beyond high school graduation. I didn't realize how much of an impact Noble's mission made in my life until I finished my freshman year of college. To this day, I am grateful Noble emphasized and stressed the importance of advocating for yourself. I realized in college that your voice is the most powerful tool to create change, and we have the right to use our voice to challenge injustices. As I prepare to start my senior year at Georgetown, I often reflect on my growth as an individual. I am no longer afraid to voice my opinion on issues that matter to me and my community or assert that a student from the city of Chicago has the right to a good education and path to college. We are the legacy of those that have fought for us to be in the spaces of higher education, and I am proud to be an alumna of both CPS and Noble, two organizations that motivate and prepare students from Chicago to succeed in life. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Yitzel Villegas, and in May, I became the first person in my family to graduate from college and do a debt-free. Before I was born, my parents decided to abandon their home to come to this country where I would have an opportunity, to receive a quality education that would allow me to have a brighter future. My educational journey began at Funston Elementary, a neighborhood school on the West Side. Teachers welcomed me with open arms despite my inability to speak, read, or write English. I was the first time I experienced academic encouragement, which led me to be on honor roll every school year until I graduated from eighth grade. In my neighborhood, I was exposed to substance abuse, domestic violence, and gang violence, which forced me to mature very quickly at a very young age, but I knew that I wanted something different for myself and my family. Unfortunately, my local neighborhood high school was low-performing, and I have refused to attend. Instead, I enrolled into a public charter, Roe-Clark Math and Science Academy, a Noble school. Roe-Clark became my home, my safe haven. It turned out to be a great learning environment that gave me all the tools to be successful in school, but most importantly, in life. I was fortunate enough to have devoted teachers that supported me and loved me unconditionally. Even though my life outside of school was falling apart, Roe-Clark offered me various outlets such as sports and after-school programs that I was able to channel my anger in a positive manner. I was able to apply to 23 colleges and be admitted into 22. I obtained outside scholarships on my own, which allowed me to continue my studies at Denison University for all four years, where I was able to study biology and Spanish. In the future, I hope to one day be able to attend medical school and become a doctor. Now, I am back at Roe-Clark, serving as an enrollment coordinator, giving the opportunity to make a positive impact on the lives of young men and women as we help them on their journey towards their college degree. The CPS budget is tight, but I ask that high-performing charters like Noble are not treated unfairly when it comes time to make cuts. Please, don't jeopardize Noble's programs that have truly changed my life and can change the life of thousands of other Chicago students everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Arthur Morales. I am an alum from Chicago Bulls College Prep. While I stand here thankful for my Bulls experience, make no mistake, attending Bulls prep was very difficult. Bulls had very high expectations not only for their teachers and staff, but for their students. The rules were clear and allowed no gray areas. This provided me with a framework to be successful at Noble and at UIC, where I'll be graduating from in 2019. The impact that Noble had on me inspired me to become a disciplinarian at Bulls during my first year at college. As a staff member at Bulls, I realized that if I wasn't my best version, my students were the ones who would ultimately suffer. Bulls taught me that I will struggle and need to fight through it in order to be successful. Bulls helped me by teaching me the skills and the tools I need to start my journey to the road of success, and I'm glad to say I'm going down the right path. The Noble staffs aren't just teachers and coaches, they're family. They care and are willing to do anything to help their students make their weaknesses into a strength. Weaknesses to strength means a lot to me. I was in special ed since third grade because of my low reading level. I often felt embarrassed to show my face. In freshman year at Bulls, my first class was reading resources. In that class, I felt like I was given an encyclopedia of techniques and exercises to improve my reading. So I took in all the information the teacher gave us. In the following year, they told me I wasn't required to be in special ed. To describe how I felt, I need more than two minutes. Bulls helped me break down an obstacle that I thought I was never going to overcome. They also molded me into the leader I am today. I have my dream job of becoming a boxing trainer at Title Boxing Club. I was offered a position as an assistant manager. I've only been working there for two months. Of course, I couldn't have done this alone. Bulls developed my leadership skills. I was taught how to introduce myself in a powerful way. They showed me no fear and no embarrassment, and I learned the techniques to sound professional on a one-on-one conversation and how to speak not just in front of a class, but in front of the whole school and motivate them the way Noble motivated me. Noble does a spectacular job on preparing students for college. My first class at UIC felt like a class at high school. It was a breeze.
Mr. Morales, can you please conclude?
Yes. So please, during this fall, please visit Noble and listen to the other 20,000 stories that Noble education impacted. Thank you.
You spoke particularly well today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Myra Lopez, and I am a current Worcester student and graduate of Noble Network. I'm sure you heard from many Noble students about the success they've had in college. Like my peers, I too have some challenges to overcome. My parents brought me to the United States when I was one year old, but I didn't understand the challenge that came with being undocumented until I was applying to college. During my senior year, I was struck with the news that I would not be receiving any federal student aid, and therefore, my chances of attending a four-year college were small. Although I was devastated, I refused to accept this obstacle. I continued to work hard because deep down, I knew that this was not the end of my dreams. Thanks to the Pritzker Travel Foundation and the Pritzker Family Foundation, I was able to pursue my dream of college graduation. In 2015, 70 undocumented students from the Noble Network were offered the Pritzker Access Scholarship, a scholarship that closed the gap left by the lack of federal student aid. Today, the college graduation rate for undocumented Noble alums is projected to be 80%, a huge difference from the current 10% nationwide. This opportunity has allowed me to meet people from all over the world at the College of Worcester, including many inspiring Latinos. Their support continues to motivate me and encourage me to dream big. Nothing makes me happier than seeing my siblings follow my footsteps. My sister, a rising senior at Chicago Bulls, is currently working two jobs while maintaining a high GPA. My brother is a passionate and dedicated about his work and is a very skilled soccer player. The Noble staff is full of talented and dedicated educators and also great listeners. They listen to stories of students who, like me, grew up in neighborhoods full of drugs and violence. I know this because I had the privilege of having a great advisor by my side. Although I want to go to law school, I also want to teach at Noble. I want to leave an impact on the youth the same way my teachers left an impact on me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And our next speaker, please.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Adriana Rodriguez. The most valuable tool that someone can obtain is an opportunity, an opportunity to prove society wrong and to dismantle barriers. I received one of the most significant opportunities in my life when the lottery drew my application number, earning me a spot in the Noble Street College Prep class of 2012. As an eighth grader, I did not know much about Noble. I did not test high enough for a selective enrollment school. My family could not afford a private high school, and attending my neighborhood school, to me, could mean a dead end. But I knew I wanted something better for myself, and I needed a place that could unlock my full potential. So I took a chance with Noble. My time at Noble was marked by teachers who believed in my excellence, teachers who stayed three hours after the 4:00 PM school day to improve my writing skills, teachers who arrived an hour before the school day started to coach the math team I founded, teachers who still reached out to me four years after my high school graduation to check on my well-being. They believed in me when sometimes I did not believe in myself. Noble's environment implicated in me a culture of honor, respect, and perseverance, reviving my hunger to learn and making tangible my goal of attending college. Well, I stand in front of you today as a recent college graduate. I graduated from one of the best colleges in the world, Yale University. I am a young, low-income Latina whose father's highest love of education is sixth grade. Taking statistics into account, obtaining a college degree is a major accomplishment a feat made possible by Noble. With that, I ask, please consider the Noble Network of charter schools and upcoming policy and budgeting decisions. When it comes to underrepresented minority Chicago public school students, my accomplishments are not and should not be the exception. They can be the norm.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick.
Every student deserves a chance, and Noble gave me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick.
I'm sure that the Noble Network is very proud of you and all of those that just spoke. I suspect Yale is pretty proud of you, too.
I hope so.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, our next group of speakers then will be Speaker number 52, please, Dr. Leon Finney, followed by Speaker number 18, Gerald Morrow. We then have Speaker 21, Dory Collins; Speaker 37, Sable Russell; 49, Melinda Kelly; Speaker 51, Leonard McGee; and Speaker 53, Robert McKay, please.
Mr. President, Clark, Vice President Guzman, CEO Claypool, of course, Chief Education Officer Janice Jackson. My name is Leon Finney, and with me today are some people that I thought would be very much interested in hearing and seeing your deliberations. They're part of our summer youth program, Ms. Hampton, Rosanna Trevino, Tiara Felix, Ariel Grant, and of course, Reverend Alan Connolly, and the chairman of the board of our church trustees, Larry Hanks. We represent about 2,900 families in the Bronzeville area, 6,200 individuals in the Bronzeville area that we work with, 250 kids this summer at our church in Bronzeville. I live in Bronzeville. I'm a graduate of Hyde Park High School, class of 1957. We are here today because of the issue that we think is very, very important, and in that instance, I represent an organization that we recently formed, and it is the Good Schools Project, and it's committed to working to make all schools good. Today, our concern obviously is about Dunbar High School, Dunbar Vocational High School. And towards that end, the Board of Education made a wise decision, and that was to make Dunbar Vocational School ready for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Union, to have a program in that school to help our kids become skilled enough to become unionized. That's a critical thing, and we want to thank Chief Education Officer Janice Jackson, who in a very heated and conflict-ridden meeting, decided to put her own self personally in the middle of the fight, and of course, she delivered a powerful message, and that was the Board of Education was prepared to make sure that that program would be successful at Dunbar. And we are here to commend Ms. Jackson for her stalwart work and her work, and we want her to know and want the board to know that this is a very, very important program. Mr. President, I could go on, and you know, because I'm a member of the clergy, preachers don't know when to sit down, but I'm going to do my best to conclude this by saying that it's very, very important that this program be not just continued, but expanded to include all of the other building trades that we have here in the city of Chicago. Our kids need to go to work, and that's the best way that we can prevent and arrest the violence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Finney, and most of the people in the audience have seen your name, and I suspect they know you as well as everyone here on the board. I want to applaud and express my appreciation for your decades, decades of commitment to the city and to our communities and to the city of Chicago as a whole. Thank you, Dr. Finney.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerald Morrow, the principal at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School. To the board and various other people that's in the audience, I'm here to speak to the support. But first of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start off with thanks, actually. From Congressman Rush to the mayor of our city, they were basically the architects of where this program actually started, the Dunbar Trades piece. In addition to that, to echo what Mr. Finney has said, I'd like to also give kudos to Dr. Jackson, our CDO. She really did step in at a very heated time to make sure that this could go forward. She answered the call. She answered the bell. She provided the support and resources that were required to make this go forward. In addition to that, I would be remiss if we did not acknowledge our CTE person, Ms. Vanda Vermaelen. She basically stood there side by side with me as well to make sure these things went forward, and they were not easy at times. She stood right in the quote-unquote lions' den. She stood her ground. She stated and advocated for what was right for kids, as well as everybody did, but she did an outstanding job. In addition to that, Dunbar would not be where it is from a year and a half ago, from the things that you were seeing in the media. Under then-Chief Jackson's direction, Jaden Chow's office with safety and security provided a lot of support to Dunbar as well to make sure that Dunbar was stable where these kind of things could happen. And in addition, last but not least, our FACE program with Kareem Pendler, John Scott, Mike McGee, they did an outstanding job inside the community to make sure those voices were heard and things were fair. So from that particular standpoint, it has been a conglomerate of people and under the umbrella of Chicago Public Schools to make this work. So from that standpoint, we transitioned to support from people outside of the school as well, from Alda Womack King, from her letter of support that she was written the other day, was outstanding. Melinda Kelly, who's actually a Dunbar alum, who's actually the chairman of the Chatham Business Commission, they're actually going to put a program in place where they're going to provide a mentor for every incoming freshman at Dunbar to make sure that the children receive the socio-emotional learning supports that they need as well. In addition to that, Mr. Finney has always stood side by side to make sure things go well, and there's various other community organizations, the CAC, Linda McGee's group. So there's been a lot of people and alums who want to make sure that this project goes forward. So there is full support from those particular avenues. In addition, some of the advantages, of course, the enrollment and stability and sustainability of Dunbar. The trade has always been a vocational school, but we understand the things that need to happen. From the unions as well, the trade opportunities for our students to make sure they can have viable things, because we've done an outstanding job in Chicago Public Schools of pushing college and pushing college prep. This will put us at the vanguard as far as trades are concerned as well, because of a lot of our students, the ones who don't go to college, they need that venue as well, and this provides that venue. In addition to that, some of the work that Dr. Jackson has done for the Chicago Teachers Union, it has helped save teachers' jobs as well. So from that particular standpoint, the Dunbar Trades Initiative going forward, providing hours for apprenticeship, providing hours for internships, because our students right now are working as interns at Dunbar on the actual project. We like to see, as Mr. Finney was speaking about, expansion. You know, I think Mr. Claypool said earlier, we have 617 schools. We have 617 schools and mainly probably not a lot of them have need repairs. It would be a great opportunity for our vocational students to work on those schools as they need repairs, who go through these trade programs as they are built. So there's other venues and other things that we will benefit from. So there is full support from the principals, from the community, from Chicago Public Schools to make sure that this actually goes forward.
Thank you very much. It's frankly very nice to hear from time to time a recognition of the effort and support that you actually receive in the field from the people in the central office. It's gracious of you to recognize that. Keep the outstanding work up.
All right, thank you.
President Clark, if I may say something, please. Gerald, it's great to see you. He was one of my first mentees that I had, and yours was the first school I visited when I became a board member at Dunbar, and it was in August of this year. And I'd just like to congratulate you on your leadership and your passion... And I'd just like to congratulate you on your leadership and your passion for bringing the community together and having this move forward.
I appreciate that, Ms. Ward. Yeah, it was like 10, 12 years ago, I was a young principal, I did not have a clue. And some would say we still struggle with that at times, but at any rate, Gail Ward basically put me under her wing. She was actually the Director of OPBD at that time. She really did not have to accept a principal. But I went to the meetings, and we connected, and she's been one of my mentors ever since. So I want to publicly say thank you as well.
Couldn't be prouder.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, and I want to commend Gerald, too, and what he's done with the students that were there, even since he's been there. I know my son visited your school.
Yes, ma'am.
Was so impressed.
Thank you.
With the conversations that he was able to have impromptu, because they didn't even know he was coming. So I want to commend you, and I definitely, we don't commend each other enough. I want to commend Dr. Jackson. I'm hearing these great things about her all throughout the city, and I want to thank her for her dedication and hard work to the children of the city of Chicago. I am so very proud of her, so proud of her.
So, thank you, be blessed.
And you.
Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Dory Collins. Good afternoon to the Board, President, Mr. Clark, members of the Board, and the executive members of the team. I am here as a community resident of Bronzeville and a community partner with Dunbar High School. I am also a former longstanding LSC parent rep, and I currently serve as the co-chair of the Inglewood Community Action Council. I am here this morning because I am in support of the Comprehensive Construction Trades Program Chicago Builds at Dunbar, to be scheduled at Dunbar High School. I am in support of this program because it will help to prepare students for careers in the construction industries. This investment will provide not only Dunbar students but Chicago's students greater choices of career, career paths, and training that will set students on a path to financial freedom. Students completing the Trades Construction Program will gain life-changing skills that will lead to greater opportunities after graduation and access to stable, middle-class careers and jobs. The Construction Trade Program will also have greater potential to increase student enrollment at the school and diversity in student population. The Construction Trades Program will strengthen our city's high schools with curriculum of 21st century learning for college and career choices and revitalize the community at large. For these reasons, I support the Chicago Builds Trade Initiative Program at Dunbar High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning. I want to thank you again. My name is Sable Russell. I'm alumni, my shirt 2004, of Dunbar Vocational Career Academy. I want to thank all those who had the idea to bring the program to my alma mater. I'm very excited about it. I want to say that I love the shops and the vocation that it brings back to the school. It was a lot of shops that's not there, that weren't there when I were there, so it's a fresh breath of air that I have more shops coming in to support the school and have opportunities to go out for our kid. The program gives our kids a great chance at careers and a great career path and job opportunities once they leave the program. I believe it supports the vision of Mr. Morrow, the direction that he's trying to take the school in. Dunbar already distinguishes itself from any other high schools because of the vocation and trades that they offer, and this program just merely complements those trades or vocations that we have at the school. And I want to thank you guys again. I finally want to say that I believe the program will help and assist in our recruitment. Our schools go up and down with recruitment. This year, we're kind of low. I just like pushed the issue of this program, and I believe that we're going to bring more kids, from the brighter and smart kids and great kids from all over the city to our school to come and grow in recruitment. I want to thank you guys again for allowing me to come here. Janice Jackson, I want to thank you, too, because you gave me the real insight of what it meant, because I was kind of confused, but you really opened up my eyes to see what it was, and I loved the opportunity that we have, and my prayers that we go forward in is great. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Kelly. I am with the Chatham Business Association, and I, too, want to take this opportunity to lend our support to Dunbar's Build Chicago, and I believe we brought letters of support that we forwarded to Dr. Jackson that we share with you today. The statistics reflecting the wealth and employment gaps between Chicago African-American communities and their non-minority counterparts are well documented and startling, and these gaps contribute directly to many of the socioeconomic challenges confronting the communities we consider at risk, manifesting themselves in the form of crime, poverty, and urban blight. It is in this vein that we, as a business association, support the establishment of programming that is consistent with our mission of improving the overall quality of life in the communities we serve. Our work as an organization puts us directly in contact with those industries that represent opportunities for economic advancement on both an individual and community level. We find that the trades, namely plumbing, carpentry, welding, electrical, and general contracting are ripe in terms of the need for skilled and social labor. It is in that vein that we put a pilot program together in partnership, thanks to Dr. Jackson who supported it, because initiatives aren't supported unless they have collaboration. We were well received by the Principal, Mr. Morrow, who also allowed us to meet with the LSC and the staff, and as a result, what we have instituted in the summer, working with the kids in the trade program in the summer, is a pilot program where we will use actual construction sites as laboratories for the youth who are interested in various trades. They need to get right in with the businesses, they need to form those relationships, they need opportunity for them to work. So we're very proud of that. We plan on pushing it through as this pilot program through the fall. What we would need from the Board and anyone in this room is any project in the city of Chicago that is construction site, ask, are the Dunbar Trade Program involved? And if they're not, reach out to Chatham Business Association and let us make sure that we put those youths to work to show how valuable their trade skills are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Leon McGee, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, please. Speaker 53, Robert McKay.
Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Jackson, I'm Robert McKay, an alumni of Dunbar Vocational High School back from 1967. I left Dunbar and I went into the military, I'm a Vietnam veteran, came out, completed my education at Southern Illinois University. It appears that we have reinvented the wheel. Dunbar, when I left Dunbar in 1967, was a vocational high school with trades flourishing. Young men could leave that school and go into plumbing, carpentry, bricklaying, printing, when that was viable back then, but we know we have the internet now, so that trade would have been washed out. But the auto industry accepted people from Dunbar. Now, Dunbar, from that point on, it appears that someone reinvented the wheel with the career academies, and come up with a square, and it doesn't work. Dunbar, at one point, could hold 2,400 students. Now I understand that there are less than 400 students at Dunbar. There's a deliberate and concerted malicious effort to disrupt the education, and it appears that we go back in history, after the Brown versus Board of Education, something must be done about Prince Edward County. This program, this education system in Prince Edward County, Virginia, was disrupted after they realized that they had to integrate. They left the school system and went and recreated school systems outside of the Prince Edward County. This is a white community there, and it's seriously disrupted because you don't have, being a protected class, being former or descendants of kidnapped people, enslaved people, you don't have the structured banks, insurance systems, railroads, corporations to support your education, and we rely on handouts, hand-me-downs, to complete our education. And when that's cut off, we can't exist. So these are some of the things. And then I want to show you, many people need to look at history. The Kerner Commission Report.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Can you please conclude?
I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you.
But the thing is that we need to bring the trades back into Dunbar, support that greatly, support Dr. Jackson, John Scott, who's sitting behind me, Geraldine Chowes, Janice Pass, who's a member of our organization, Illinois Grassroots Coalition.
Thank you.
We attended a local school council meeting at Dunbar, and it was a mass confusion over there, and it appears to have been disruptive, deliberate, disruptive process to undermine the progress in support of the principal there, Gerald Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. McKay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker Number 13, please, Dennis O'Neill, followed by Speaker 22, Maria Juarez. We will then have Speaker 29, Evangel Yannubian, Speaker 34, Gabriela Du Ministro.
Good afternoon, Mr. Clark and Mr. Claypool and the rest of the Board and executive staff. My name's Dennis O'Neill with Connecting Four Communities. You have a letter from me, a letter of support from Alderman Danny Solis for what our community is requesting, along with a study from the University of Chicago called the Smith Brief Report that demonstrates that there are a fairly large number of people that are contemplating leaving our community due to lack of access to high-quality public education. We have done a lot of work to engage the University of Illinois at Chicago deeply and Smith Elementary School. Our community is home to one of the largest, most incomplete federal redevelopments of federal public housing in the nation that was set up for failure from the very beginning when four failing schools were closed over a period of eight years and consolidated into Smith Elementary, and the Principal, Dr. Ron Whitmore, was told to make a go of that. Now, that, of course, was contrary to Brown versus Board of Ed, which underpins Gettrau et al. versus CHA and HUD filed in August of 1966, which, under HOPE VI, HUD's HOPE VI program and supporting federal legislation, was designed to actually create socio-economically integrated communities of opportunity. I am unclear how consolidating four segregated schools into one would do that. Nonetheless, Dr. Whitmore has done amazing work. We have, we believe Smith will move from a Level III to a Level I or Level I+ school. We've had, actually, a professor who is bringing a full team in and will be hiring a tenure-track faculty member that will deeply engage at Smith in addition to all the work that the Dean of UIC's College of Education, Alfred Tatum, who's a nationally recognized expert in literacy for young black boys, is doing with his million-dollar grant.
Ms. O'Neal.
The Kellogg Foundation to scale up.
Ms. O'Neal.
Results from a pilot study that he did with the UIC Reading Clinic. I would ask that you seriously consider the two issues that I've outlined in the letter and take a look at that Smith Brief Report. We need to make the redevelopment of the CHA's Oblahoms a success.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal.
The current rate that it's taking, 20 years.
Thank you for your comments.
200 million-dollar money.
Our next speaker, please.
It will take 80 years to complete. That's unacceptable. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Maria Juarez. I'm a former Chicago Public School student, and also I'm a proud parent of three students who attend UCSN Carlos Fuentes Elementary School, which stands for Uno Charter School Network. As a parent residing in the city, I'm very fortunate to have a choice regarding where I send my children, my daughters, to school. I'm beyond satisfied with the exceptional education my children receive at Uno Charter School Network. The leadership and dedication teaching staff are truly committed to the academic success of my children, my daughters, therefore making Uno Charter School Network rank among the highest performing schools networks in Chicago. It's extremely important for me that I continue to have this voice and a choice of option for my daughter's education, as I, the parent, know what is best for my kids. I understand that the funding situation is far from over and know that I will continue to advocate for equal and fair funding for all schools, including UCSN and diverse learners in our charter schools. As the summer break is coming to an end, I'm looking forward for my daughters to begin school on time with no disruptions in August 10. Thank you for not postponing my children's education. I appreciate everything you have done for my charter school and any Chicago Public School. I'm looking forward to continual academic accomplishment for my daughters, who, the first one, the little one, is in second grade, the third one is in fourth grade, and the older one is going to seventh grade. As a former Chicago Public School student, I'm very grateful for the UCSN Fuentes, Carlos Fuentes, teachers and community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Evangel Yannubian, and I invite everyone to kick the K-word habit. A kid is a goat, an animal beast with four legs. The child is a human being, person with two legs. Children have a human rights to be called human beings and to respect the rights of children and the God that made them in His image and in His likeness. As founding president of Global Committee Commemorative King Days, I'd like to have your participation in our 32nd Annual Dream Day Vision Quest and Jubilee. It is visually affirmed by wearing the colors black and white in the spirit of Wayo, which means we are one in righteousness, justice, peace, peoplehood, and cultural coexistence. This year's theme is "We Dream a World Without Violence, and a Little Child Shall Lead Them." Dream Day will honor the 50th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr. being stoned in Marquette Park, bringing open housing to blacks in Chicago, and it will also mark the Emmett Till-Dr. King connection. August 28, 1955 was the kidnapping of Emmett Till. August 28, 1963 was the Emancipation Dream March on Washington. And it is important, with so many children being murdered in the city of Chicago, I believe 17 have, under the age of 11 years old, have been murdered. So we are planning a program where the children will present their artwork and essays on dreaming a world without violence, and they will quest and display this artwork and the work of the children that was murdered in the movement, as well as the children that changed America. I'd like to know, who can I contact concerning your participation?
Thank you very much. I think that I'll look to Abigail Joseph, the chief of staff to the Board, and she'll provide you with whatever guidance is appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Gabriela Dumitrescu, and I'm a teacher at Marshall Middle School. We come before you today to explain, to express our concerns and comments regarding the proposed move from Thurgood Marshall Middle School, located at 3,900 North Lawndale Avenue, to Roosevelt High School. We, the staff, are not opposed to moving Roosevelt High School and changing the name to Roosevelt, or, I'm sorry, opposed to moving Thurgood Marshall Middle School to Roosevelt High School and changing the name to Roosevelt Middle School, but would like to be ensured that all staff transfer to the new location, including our counselor, clerk, SECA, security, and an art teacher. Confirmation that this is not a colocation, that it is a colocation at Roosevelt, not school action. Confirmation that the only layoffs for 2016-17 will be due to normal declines in student enrollment per budget released for 2016-17 school year. All positions should be secure. And we also would like to ensure the safety and transition of all students from Marshall, transfer to the new campus, so just busing, communication with parents, safe passage and so forth. In the event, the Board wishes to consolidate the two schools into one unit, the Board will provide adequate time for Marshall staff to obtain valid credentials for 9 to 12 in the future. We have built strong and positive relationships with our students, families, and community, and our hope is that this move will create a culture of belonging and responsibility and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. Dr. Jackson's going to respond.
Just a quick comment. Thank you for coming out. It's my understanding that we had a meeting, you probably were there. I know it's a relatively I know it's a relatively small staff, so if all of you showed up, that's probably, you know, close to all of the teaching staff. But we have made commitments around the colocation and guaranteeing employment for teachers and staff members transitioning to the school. The only thing that's new on this proposal is information around busing. That was not something that we were able to commit to, but I do think it's important to publicly commit to the fact that, you know, this is a colocation. We're not attempting to close your school and force teachers to, you know, apply for new jobs at the new school. So those guarantees that we expressed in that public meeting with teachers and parents last week are the same guarantees that we're prepared to commit to.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll have someone on my team follow up directly, just to provide a written response on some of the other things outlined here in this letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speakers then will be Speaker number 38, please, Martin Ritter, followed by Speaker 41, Narin Gutacast, followed by Speaker 45, Willie Cousins. We then will have Speaker 48, Maria, I'm sorry, Martha Ariaga, and the last speaker, Speaker 50, Maria Valdez.
Narin Gutacast is not here.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Mr. Claypool, Dr. Jackson, contrary to numerous statements in the press, classrooms are not protected from this current 2016 budget process. Teachers, principals, LSC members, and parents have reported to us, the CTU, to the press, to their communities, that many classrooms and many students will be affected. This doesn't have to be so. You have a choice, and it's local, not downstate. On last Wednesday, Alderman Cardenas and CTU member and 10th Ward Alderman Sue Sedlowski Guards introduced the Chicago Public Education Revitalization Ordinance. It was signed by four-fifths of the City Council, four-fifths, that's 80% third-grade math, like Mr. Claypool told me to say a couple of months ago. And like I said, the CPERO, as it's constantly, currently constituted, would be at least $150 million of new revenue from the city of Chicago, from TIF surpluses, and it would establish at least 1,000 teaching positions, reestablish hundreds of academic and extracurricular programs, and this proposal is now in the City Council Committee on Finance chaired by Alderman Burke of the 14th Ward. We encourage your intergovernmental staff to contact Chairman Burke, the Finance Committee, the mayor's office, and have a hearing, and hopefully moving forward on this ordinance so that CPS can have additional revenue to fund the schools that our students truly deserve, not the permanent nature of the cuts from last February. All right? Alderman, all over the city, community organizations all over the city have said that we want this TIF surplus to hit CPS soon. You need more revenue. Please go for it. I have one copy of the ordinance if you'd like, and you can copy it and share it.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Our next speaker, please. Willie Cousins, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Speaker 48, Martha Ariaga, please. Please state your name.
My name is Martha Ariaga. January 2016, Marshall Boulevard School Campus Plan started with community, parents, students, and staff from the four schools. The data collected during the planning process reinforced the idea that all four schools have unique cultural and a track record of success that have fostered a strong sense of community within each one. Community Link High School, a small school with high five essential scores, high graduate rate, and a specialized program that allows students to graduate in only three years. Maria Salsera Scholastic Academy has the highest possible SQRP rating, one-plus, quality extracurricular programming, high parents engagement, and a diverse student body. John Spy Community School is a strong neighborhood school with high SQRP rating, one, and a quality extracurricular program. To put it exactly, Elementary School is a small school with high five essential scores, high level of community engagement, dual language, and a arts center curriculum. We have submitted a long-term recommendation for the use of the space across the four schools. There are a number of short-term recommendations that we can improve the use and the coordination of the existing space while the long-term solution is pursued. Safety and functionality of outdoor space are the common concern. The Marshall Boulevard School Campus Plan Leadership Team is committed to support the organizing and committee engagement advocacy and resource development necessary to implement both short and long-term recommendations. With the submission of this proposal, I have right here, the planning process will be moving into Phase II. In addition to meeting regularly to facilitate implementation, the leadership will take the lead in engaging stakeholders. This information with more detail was given to all of yous today. I'm asking you to read through all this information, and we would like to meet with you to discuss this proposal. We look forward to continuing to work with CPS, Alderman Cardenas, our state representative, community partners, and of course, our community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ariaga.
You guys all received.
Yes, we did.
And also, I would like to give you two complete ones because.
Okay.
The whole proposal. And like I said, I know, Mr. Guzman, we had talked.
Yeah, I know I've been out three times. I've visited all four schools, and I just want to thank everyone here for all the work. I know you all have put in a lot of time and effort and energy into coming up with these recommendations. We'll definitely take a look at them.
Okay, then you could let us know, because we really would like to sit down and talk to you about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes public participation.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions from any of the comments made during public participation? Yes, go ahead.
I just don't know what Children and Family Benefit Unit is. The young lady, you know, read the statement about "Don't Let It Die." Is that a unit within CPS? I just don't know.
Yes, it is. Alfonso, you want to address that?
Well, I did want to also mention that we, can you hear me? Yeah. That we just received a grant from CMS for.
What's CMS?
What does it stand for?
Center for Medical Medicaid Services.
Thank you. Center for Medicaid Services of $865,000 to increase enrollment for Medicaid and CHIP, which is, will be, so that's related to this, not what your question is. I want to make sure I got on the record.
Absolutely, and I want to just add on to President Claypool's comments that that grant will help us to continue to support and work specifically with school-age population to get them enrolled into Medicaid. The other opportunity that we have, we implemented for this, Dr. Hines, is to increase support. We've also entered an agreement with the Greater Chicago Food Depository to place 10 full-time staff within high-needs areas to support the direct service of enrolling and assistance families to retain benefits. So this isn't exactly the benefits unit, but what we're trying to do, and what President Claypool is trying to do, is find other funding opportunities and alternate ways to continue to support this important work for the children.
Okay, so what is the benefit unit?
So the benefit unit was a group that provided support for the parents to enroll into Medicaid, SNAP, and other programs, and for them to get the benefits that they would merit based on their needs.
Okay, thank you.
I have two quick questions related to terminology. Janice, if you could talk, explain a little bit about MTSS. I know it was an acronym that you talked about early on. And then a more, just a more substantive question is really talking about the issue of transparency reported versus actual cuts. That was a conversation that came up in Forest. So if we can talk about what has been done or what will be done in terms of, you know, what the cuts look like, school by school, or year over year? Those are my two questions.
Just real quick, MTSS is a process, a problem-solving process, but what it essentially says is that all students will be exposed to a high-quality curriculum and education. So it starts with the notion that we will provide an educational curriculum that is accessible to 100% of our students. When it's noticed that students are not able to access that curriculum, we use a tiered system to determine what supports are being made. So in the past, students would be presented with the curriculum if they had concerns, whether it was related to, you know, language proficiency, or just when they started school, processing issues, et cetera. It went from access to the curriculum to referral to EL programming, DL programming, et cetera. What we're asking schools to do is to take a more scaffolded approach so that if students aren't progressing academically, or if they're having issues socially, that we have steps in place to try to intervene before we refer them to the most, you know, intensive process. So the way that it works is Tier One is for everybody. Tier Two would be students who have some concerns that could be mitigated by tutoring, extra support, et cetera. If it's discipline, maybe counseling. And then Tier Three are your most severe situations, and what we're trying to do is ensure that we're not over-representing students, over-identifying students for programming when we haven't taken the right interventions before making that decision.
Did it go by another name historically? I'd imagine that that's happened.
In the past, we used to call it RTI. Some people make that connection, but the only distinction that I'll make is RTI stands for Response to Intervention, and in my opinion, you were already responding when there was a concern, as opposed to really being clear about what it is we're going to present to everybody. So it really takes us back, you know, one step before we actually respond, which is how do we organize our school in a way where there are fewer things that we have to respond to in such an aggressive way.
Great. Thank you.
As to your other question, the, when we released the school budgets, we put out a spreadsheet for every school in terms of comparative funding and new funding, including different categories, Title I, Title II, individuals, individual parents, LSCs, principals, and press asked for more details, so we sent out a second, much more, not much more, but a second, more detailed spreadsheet that had things like the fiscal year prior to the revised budget revenues from last year, special education funding in every single school from last year, more detail in response to those questions and concerns. So the revised spreadsheets that we sent out should have a lot more detail and allow the sorts of comparisons that people want. So some people may still be looking at the originals, but we did do, in response to those questions, we did put out a second, more detailed spreadsheet so that everybody could see every detail at every school.
Dr. Hines?
Yeah. I just want to go back, has to do with this, I'm getting to read this a little deeper. If this unit was cut, and it appears that this unit served the most underserved families, why was it cut? And are you saying because of the new funding, it will come back? Because it's my understanding that most of the staff was paid for by outside money anyway. So why was it cut? And based on what you just said, Forrest, are we restoring it?
Yeah, I don't have enough detail right now, Dr. Hines, to really fully answer that question, so let me do some research and actually give you a fulsome.
Dr. Hines, I can shed a little light. This is a conversation, frankly, I had this morning, and it was with Alfonso, who reports up to our CEO. I know that this is an area that's being revisited, is being looked at. I don't think that we can say precisely what the outcome's going to be, but I do, I am certain that it's been revisited.
I just have one quick question, just for the record, I know we've heard a lot of concerns and consternation about the budget. Can we just, for the record, just state what are the resources that are available to principals, to LSCs, to sort of navigate this process? I know there's an appeal process that was referenced, other ways that we're providing resources to schools, leaders, communities, to make sure that they're sort of doing the most planful process to make sure that they're preparing for the school year? Ron?
Throughout the budget, throughout the budget process, we actually had what I would call fiscal consultants working with each of the principals to help them actually finish their budgets. The budgets have been submitted. There will be a future appeals process, and we're working very closely with the principals to make sure that they understand that budgets and all of the tools that we have that will help them submit their budget. So the budgets have been submitted, and we're in the process of analyzing and rolling them.
Are the consultants on your staff, so they're budget experts, Ron?
They're, yes. Thank you so much, dear. Yes, they are. They are part of our school support services that actually help the schools throughout the year. So they are our staff that are working with the schools, and we're actually expanding that, you know, that department to be able to give fiscal support to the schools.
I think it's safe to say, Ron, actually, this is probably even more so for our CEO, this is an area of opportunity. We know that the way the budget comes together is precarious, and we don't know a lot of things until the 11th hour. It comes together not as one nice neat package. It comes together in pieces, and some of those pieces are subject to conditions, so it's very hard to have a final number. You're working from it very late in the process. It makes communications much more challenging, and then there are eternal issues that we have to look at and make some hard decisions. But what I take from Vice President Guzman's comments and questions is if the opportunity end of it, we certainly want our principals more than virtually anyone, and obviously the network chiefs. These folks need to finally understand what it is that they're going to see in terms of their budgets, and in many cases, an explanation as to why they're seeing what they're seeing. I know this is top of the mind for our CEO, because he's told me that, and you certainly have told me the same thing, but it is still work to be done, and we would expect that you folks are very focused on that.
And I will say that we did have trainings and workshops throughout that. It was a compressed timeframe because of when we got the funding, but we did all that we could to give as much support as possible, and we have support beyond their submitting their budgets throughout the year.
Thank you.
And I would just, honest, this is the last thing, but this really concerns me. I know that this is the operation decision, and we, you know, don't make these kinds of decisions, but this is where I spend a lot of time in the community, trying to work with these constituents of ours and our friends and these children. So when it's going to be those kinds of cuts, I would like to get some information on that so that I'm not blindsided out there and that I have an understanding either before or after they're done. Please.
Thank you, Dr. Hines. Duly noted. Our public participation is over. I see your hand being raised. I don't want you to think we're ignoring you. Whatever question you have, please let the secretary know, and we'll make sure someone addresses that. With that, Dr. Hines, do we have a motion?
I move for the passage of motion number 16-0727-M01, and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Guerinzini?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting will now go into closed session.
We're going to resume the meeting of the Board of Education. Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with new and continued council retentions. These items do require a vote. First report, the law firm Hinshaw &amp; Culbertson, LLP. Second report, the law firm Jenner &amp; Block, LLP. Third report, the law firm Thompson &amp; Covert, LLP. I will proceed with continued council retentions. The fourth report is the law office of Sabrina Alhaque, and the fifth report is the law office of Elizabeth G. Schrader. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Guerinzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's. Mr. President, I'll continue with settlements and awards and one-personnel matter. These items do require a vote. First report, approved payment to settle grievances regarding tenure teacher Yolanda Munoz. Second report, property tax appeal refund authorized settlement for Uniqua, North America, Vantage Oleo, regarding its property for tax years 2009 through 2014. Mr. President, I'll continue with the one-personnel item, and that is appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law. General Counsel, Department of Law, for Kevin O'Brien. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with the ALSC principal contracts and one talent recommendation from the chief executive officer. These items do require a vote. The first report is the principal contracts for new ALSC. The second report is the principal contract for a renewal ALSC. I will continue with the talent recommendation, and that is approve appointment of Chief Information Technology Officer effective June 20, 2016, and ratify all lawful actions taken as Chief Information Technology Officer since June 20, 2016 for Philip Di Bartolo. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with warning resolutions, and these items do require a vote, and they are Cassandra Washington, Principal Gale Community Academy, Mercedes Johnson, tenured teacher, Claremont Academy, Timothy Meagan, tenured teacher, Roosevelt High School, and David Stone, tenured teacher, Galistl Language Academy. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now I'll continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote, and they are resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss the educational support personnel. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers, and I would like to note for the record that on July 22, 2016, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Boardo 4-1 and 105 ILCS 5/34-84. His recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and he also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe that Member Jordan Turner has a motion, please.
I move that pursuant to Section 2.06D of the Open Meetings Act, board members have reviewed the redacted portions of closed session minutes previously open for public inspection for the period of July 1995 through June 2014. These minutes with noted redactions were open to the public by the board at various times from January 2012 to January 2016. Upon review of the noted redactions, the board finds the need for confidentiality does not exist for certain redactions, while the need for confidentiality continues to exist for other redacted portions of these minutes. Upon adoption of this motion, all existing closed session minutes from July 1995 through June 2014 will be available for public inspection with the continuing redactions noted.
Second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's, and I believe Member Ward has a motion, please.
I move that pursuant to Section 2.06D of the Open Meetings Act, the board members have reviewed closed session minutes for the period beginning July 2014 through December 2014. The board members have determined that the need for confidentiality does not exist as those minutes, except as indicated in the redacted portions. Minutes were redacted for the following: A, privileged attorney-client communications; B, information subject to privacy or confidentiality protections in state or federal law; and C, information where the board determines if necessary to protect the public interest or the privacy of an individual. The board finds that the need for confidentiality as to the redacted materials remains. Upon adoption of the motion, all closed session minutes from July 2014 through December 2014 with noted redactions will be available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's, and I believe Member Father Garanzini has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of June 22, 2016. Board members have reviewed these minutes along with the previously approved minutes of the closed sessions from January 2015 through May 2016 in accordance with the Section 2.06D of the Open Meetings Act. Following this review, board members have determined that the need for confidentiality exists as to all closed session minutes from January 2015 through June 2016, and therefore, these minutes will not be available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's, and I believe Member Furlong has a motion, please.
Section 2.06(c) of the Open Meetings Act permits the destruction of audio recordings of closed session meetings no less than 18 months after the completion of a meeting. If the board has, one, approved the minutes of the closed meeting, and, two, approves the destruction. The board's closed session meetings from July 2014 until December 2014 occurred more than 18 months ago, and the board secretary maintains board-approved confidential minutes for all such closed sessions. I move that the auto-recordings of the board's closed session meetings from July 2014 until December 2014, as itemized on the attached Appendix A, be authorized for destruction in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's, and I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that the recording of proceedings of the regular board meeting of June 22, 2016 prepared by the board secretary be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06(b) of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
And Member Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Father Garanzini?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's. Mr. President, I will now continue with the real estate exec items, and these items do require a vote, and they are approve entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Cook for the lease of the Hanson Park Fieldhouse site located at approximately 5501 West Fullerton Avenue, and authorize public building commission to convey title to the Hanson Park property to the City of Chicago in trust for use of schools. The second report is transfer title of former Nathaniel Pope Elementary School, 1852 South Alban Avenue, to the Chicago Housing Authority, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the public agenda items and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with one resolution, and this item does require a vote, and that is RS1. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with one communication. This item does not require a vote, and it reads, "This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, August 24, 2016, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m., and public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the August 24, 2016 board meeting, advance registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, August 22 at 10:30, and will close on Tuesday, August 23 at 5 p.m. or until slots are filled. And you could advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers." Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote, and they are EX1, 2, and for the record, I would like to note abstentions for Board Member Furlong as well as Member Father Garanzini on EX2. I then continue with EX3, 4, and 5, and for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Member Ward on EX5. Moving on to EX6, I would like to note for the record an abstention for Member Ward on EX6 as well. We then have PR1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and we move on to PR8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with additional items on the public agenda that do not require a vote, and they are EX7, 8, and AR1. Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no further items on the public agenda, but before we conclude, Mr. President, I will continue with a statement that needs to be read into the record regarding the estimate of taxes to be levied. And it reads, "Report of the Senior Vice President of Finance, Chief Financial Officer pursuant to Boardo 5-14 and Section 35 ILCS 200/18-60 of the Illinois Property Tax Code." 35ILCS 200/18-60 of the Illinois Property Tax Code, the code, requires that not less than 20 days prior to the adoption of its aggregate levy, the corporate authority of each taxing district shall determine the amount of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for that fiscal year upon the taxable property in its district. Section 18-70 of the code provides in part that if the estimate of the corporate authority made as provided in Section 18-60 is more than 105% of the amount extended or estimated to be extended upon the financial aggregate levy of the preceding year, then the corporate authority is required to give public notice of and hold a public hearing on its intent to adopt a levy in excess of 105% of the amount extended or estimated to be extended in the prior year. Board Rule 5-14 delegates to the Senior Vice President of Finance, the Chief Financial Officer, the authority to annually determine the estimate of property taxes to be levered as required under 35ILCS 200/18-60, and to report that the estimate to the board through the Office of the Secretary of the Board. Board Rule 5-14 also requires that not less than 20 days prior to the adoption of the board's aggregate levy, the Senior Vice President of Finance shall determine the amounts of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for that fiscal year upon taxable property in the district, and that the estimate shall be deemed an act of the corporate authority upon receipt of the Senior Vice President of Finance report of estimate by the Secretary of the Board. The Senior Vice President of Finance hereby estimates that the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation upon the taxable property in the district as defined in Section 18-60 of the code is $2,741,200,000, and certifies that this estimated amount is more than the limit defined in Section 18-70 of the code. This report is filed with the Secretary of the Board this 27th day of July 2016, and it will also be included in the official proceedings of the board. Mr. President, that is all we have for our agenda.